Everybody, to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 22, 2019. Can I go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time? All council members are present. Sorry, can you hear me, sir? All council members are present. Down off the dais, to the far left, we have our city attorney, Bill McClure. Immediately to his right, we have our city manager, Senator Jerome Robinson. On the dais here, to my far left, we have council member Catherine Carlton. To my immediate left, we have Mayor Pro Tem Cecilia Taylor. To my immediate right, we have council member Betsy Nash. To her immediate right, we have council member Drew Combs. And then down off the dais, we have our city clerk, Ms. Judy Heron. If you would like to speak on any of the items this evening, if you could please go ahead and fill a comment card in the back of the room, provide that to Ms. Heron so we know to go ahead and call you up at that time of public comment. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, free, routine, just, and strong.
Okay, so we have a, our first item on the agenda this evening is Study Session One, a presentation from Professor Bennett from the Stanford Global Project Centers on the feasibility of tunnel for rails. And I'm very appreciative for Professor Bennett showing up tonight. Very kind of him to share. He actually teaches this at a class at Stanford and really appreciate him talking about the feasibility of us, of this with us this evening. Professor Bennett.
Hi. Thanks so much for having me this evening. So as Ray mentioned, so I work at a research center at the university. We do work on kind of very large infrastructure projects. My work is more focused on the, I am an engineer, but my work is more focused on the non-engineering aspects of infrastructure development, so management, financing, governance, and contracting. And we, in my class, we do some projects on rail undergroundings, which I think is the topic I'm here to talk about this evening. And so we teach some case studies on other large rail undergrounding projects. So what I was planning on doing is really just kind of talking about, I know the council's considering the feasibility of an undergrounding project for Caltrain. So just to talk a little bit about the, you know, economics and funding mechanisms of those types of projects. And not necessarily to make a technical assessment of this particular project, but to talk about them a little more generally and answer any other questions and just be helpful in any way I can. The, it's a pleasure to talk about an infrastructure project that I am a user of. Actually, a lot of the infrastructure I talk about is of, in other places, so, as a citizen. So I guess just to start on, for rail undergroundings generally, so this is a not uncommon project to consider developing tunnel or undergrounding of train stations. It's been done in many parts of the world, in Europe. Some of the case studies that we teach are rail undergroundings in Europe. I guess I'll just start with kind of the benefits and why governments do them. So obviously, there's safety benefits, transportation benefits, a lot of at-grade crossings that can be fixed by rail undergroundings. And then a lot of the actual benefits, or kind of the good news of these types of projects is there are often material benefits to the communities surrounding the rail line. Mostly, a lot of those benefits accrete to land values, right? So rail lines, as you know, are kind of linear barriers, and Caltrain's rail line is a great example of that. So a linear barrier along the peninsula. And often, there's unique benefits when that linear barrier is essentially removed for the land values on either side. And often, for these projects, there's also, of course, land that is freed up for development on which the track currently runs. And so that land in particulars is, in a lot of cases, actually used to help kind of offset the costs of a rail undergrounding project. So for that, what that would look like is actually kind of like a development plan, right? Where a rail undergrounding frees up some developable land. These are usually very large projects, so these are intergovernment initiatives that cross a lot of boundaries, as a project like this would. And usually, they come along with a development plan, and that kind of directly offsets some of the costs of the project. And that's usually how they're structured. And then, I guess, on the other side of the ledger, on a project like this one, is, of course, the costs. And I'm sure the council has, I know I've been following the project loosely as a citizen. I've read the study that I think Palo Alto commissioned a few months ago, looking at costs for a project like a full undergrounding or a trench for the tunnel. And I'm sure some of the council members have seen those numbers too, and they're quite large, given the size of our community. And my intuition would be that those numbers are not that far off, actually. So these are, this would be an extremely expensive project. And I'm not making a technical assessment. I'm just kind of using the costs of other projects similar to it. And in particular, our location here, as you're probably aware, large public works projects are not cheap in California, in particular. And so you've probably seen some of the numbers, including some of our high-speed rail debate, that in other parts of the world, you know, projects can be cheaper on a per-mile basis for tunneling or project, or things like that. The track record in California, for the most part, has been that those numbers, like what you have seen probably in the Palo Alto report of many hundreds of millions of dollars per kind of mile of tunnel, are probably fairly accurate, just given the track record of similar projects like this in the state. And that's going to be exacerbated a little bit, simply because a project like this, I know other cities have considered tunneling project or are considering it. It would cross multiple jurisdictions. It would certainly trigger a significant kind of environmental review. And there'd be kind of a long planning process, and you're looking at coordinating across a lot of cities, of course, but then also agencies. That's going to complicate things. And of course, Caltrain is one of those agencies that would be part of the coordination. So it would be a major undertaking. And it would likely require, you know, a kind of, you know, a cross-city and cross-institutional framework in order to implement some multiple cities teaming involving state agencies in that process. And that would be generally the path forward for a project of this size and scale. So that's kind of the bad news a little bit on the project. Now, of course, the good news, as I mentioned, the benefits usually are captured in the form of land value. And Caltrain is probably on some of the most expensive land on earth. So a program like that could offset some of those costs, but that itself can be difficult to implement a development plan like that. And in the past, we have some, or teach some cases on implementation for similar rail undergrounding projects. And in general, there's not a lot of community opposition to relocating a train underground, right? That's a pretty genuinely beneficial project now if there's affected property. There can, you know, be concerns about that. Usually where there are concerns, of course, is on the attendant development that occurs, right? So for rail undergroundings, which will entail a development on the land that was previously kind of undevelopable, there can be concerns over that, if it's incorporated in the project, which it doesn't necessarily need to. So that's a fairly high-level review of what these projects generally look like, what the benefits are and how they're generally paid for. And then, you know, my estimation of the potential costs of such a project, which I do think would be substantial for what's envisioned, either, you know, through Menlo Park, or I know, you know, Atherton, Palo Alto have also been exploring partially ruled out trenching or tunneling options. But, you know, an initiative like that would come at a substantial cost in my very rough estimation. And I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any other information and just be helpful in any way I can. Thanks.
Yeah, so I actually do have a couple of questions for you that I just, in our prior conversation, I want to just go ahead and bring out. So when you talk about the amount of development necessary to make that feasible, can you give the council an idea of what you'd really be looking at along that corridor?
So it is a matter of costs and benefits, usually. So there's a few factors at play. The funding sources, if there's, if there's either tax funding to support the project or state or even federal funding. But usually, the development portion is a trade-off based on the cost of the project. So if there were, you know, land development incorporated into the project, like I mentioned, the term is, you may have heard, is land value capture, right? If it was incorporated into a project like this, it's really just balancing out against the cost of the project. So that could, obviously, if there's land value capture, it's economic development of the land, right? So there would be some, you know, offset of costs through residential commercial development on the property. Another form of land value capture, of course, is in, through vehicles like the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District or Melrose Districts to capture some of the land value because the property values on either side that are, of course, privately held of the train will benefit, and they often do. And so usually, those are the tools used to capture some of that value. But in terms of direct land value capture through development of the freed-up property, it's really a function of, it really comes down to the permitting process. So yes, typically, rail undergroundings are done in urban densities that are more dense, right, than the common development along the corridor in Menlo Park, right? So we're talking about rail undergroundings usually would be, the other cases that we've looked at would be almost like the King Street Station, like undergrounding that in San Francisco. There, you see the amount of land that would be freed up by relocating those tracks underground and also, it's a much larger chunk and much more dense in that area. So there, you see the numbers start to pencil out more. So you would be often, depending on the amount of land value capture that would be targeted, you would be looking at economic development and potentially, you know, increased density along that corridor, but it's all a trade-off.
So we would require, it would require Caltrans, number one, to grant the, grant the land value capture above the rail line?
Yes.
And then secondarily, would require urban density, both height and density-wise, in order to actually make that work, and then potentially some Melrose offset or something to that?
Those would be common tools that are used to offset some of the funding for a project like this. And as I mentioned, it would be a substantial amount that would need to be raised to offset these costs.
And the next thing I wanted to ask then, too, was then, excuse me. Yeah, so then the next thing I want to ask on that is that, with respect to the distance, and I want to make clear why I'm doing this, folks. So what, at the start of the year, what I promised stakeholders in the city was that we would have a real discussion about the viability of undergrounding the train. In past, when councils have talked about it, it's been sort of something that was talked about, and wouldn't it be great if we could, or shouldn't we do this? And so what I promised stakeholders is that we would have this investigation, like this, a real discussion about the viability of it with an expert. So it happens, we were able to find an expert who was able to do this and have this discussion with us free of charge, which we're incredibly lucky to find an expert, and a reminder of the type of, of the type of expertise we have at the disposal in our community. So we're really grateful, Professor Bennett, of that. But I want to go over these different areas of subject because I think each one of these criteria is really important for community members to understand. So the next question I have for you has to do with length of track and whether or not that makes that feasible. So recently, Palo Alto indicated that they're not actually going to, they actually finally indicated they're not going to have a full undergrounding throughout the city of Palo Alto. There might be a couple of places where they try to do that. My question to you is, in Menlo Park, looking at where we are, does that affect the feasibility of the product, the project?
Well, I think it would affect the feasibility in a couple of ways. And specifically, I'm talking about Palo Alto not, not moving further trench. So, you know, in order for a project, since this would be a large-scale project, a high-cost project, you know, generally for projects like that, in order for them to be viable from a funding perspective, incorporation of a larger footprint, right, to offset the costs of digging the tunnel. So yes, having, you know, Palo Alto involved, while it complicates governance, may require some form of a JPA or some other, other form of governance. You know, in general, it does increase the viability of the project politically, and often, even if Palo Alto isn't involved in Menlo Park's project, Palo Alto will be involved in Menlo Park's project, right, in terms of, there will be impacts and there will be a relationship there with the project. And then the second way, of course, is that it's obviously concentrating the costs of digging the tunnel, mostly in terms of ingress and egress, right? So obviously, a train can't kind of just dip into a tunnel, so this is more of some of the engineering constraints I'm talking about now. You know, it'll be a very shallow grade in terms of the ingress into the tunnel, and then it'll be underground, and then it'll be a very shallow grade egressing the tunnel in either location. So those are significant costs, the amount of ingress and egress that's needed to have the tunnel underground. And obviously, if the tunnel's shorter, those, you know, the smaller denominator there. So that's definitely a concern, too.
Thank you so much, Professor. Councilmember Nash.
Going back to the cost-effectiveness that you, of the cost offset?
Yeah.
Given that the land is Caltrain land, how does that work, presumably this, maybe I'm wrong, but I would assume the city would be responsible for building the, for doing the tunneling. And so the fact that the land belongs to Caltrain, how does that work as an offset?
Yeah, so it is Caltrain land. You know, in that case, it would need to be almost kind of contributed as part of the project by Caltrain. And obviously, and I don't, I don't know what the feasibility of that option would be. So that would, in order for that direct land value capture, if it's not used to offset some of the costs, then obviously, that's not a factor. But typically, what you'll see for some of the international projects that have been done on rail undergroundings, they're almost, almost like a JPA or like a special purpose vehicle for the project. And there'll be an agreement in which the rail agency will contribute some of the land. And then usually, there is a discussion around who will take development risk of the property as well, if that's, you know, incorporated. So whether that would be the city developing, or a JPA, or Caltrain, I don't know. I wouldn't want to speak for Caltrain's willingness to take on that, but that, usually, that's kind of, that's how it'll play out. And there have been examples where, for example, the, the land, or Caltrain is kind of given, under a development plan, they're given the rights to recoup some of the costs of developing the land, the Caltrain in that case. And then they pay for the cost of the project. And then there have been cases in which the city is given the right to develop the property, and then they take that development risk and pay for the cost of the project. So there's examples either way.
Can, actually, one more question. Can diesel go underground?
No. Not, 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 not for a length of a tunnel, a substantial length of a tunnel, you know, a very small tunnel, potentially, but bottom line is, no.
Thank you. So we have actually one comment card this evening, so I'm going to call her up and then more than likely call you back up to answer the question. Thank you, Professor Bennett. First speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Good evening, council members. Adina Levin, I will rattle off some affiliations, and I'm speaking for myself. I'm on the Menlo Park Complete Streets Commission. I work at a nonprofit, Friends of Caltrain, that works on regional transportation. And with that, I've been watching closely the Great Separation projects on the corridor and including having served on some of Palo Alto's committees to pay attention and help with the perspective on their projects. And so thank you to the mayor for providing this information and helping the community, you know, think about and understand the magnitude of these kinds of projects. As the mayor had recently mentioned, the city of Palo Alto has recently removed from consideration their citywide tunnel, which had been priced out at about four or so billion dollars, running from south of the university over to San Antonio, which is longer than what they would have here. The issues of concern is if you, you might think that going underground will be the least intrusive for construction, but one of the challenges for them is that it requires bypass tracks during the entire construction, which took a lot of land and also required the removal of a few dozen homes, which was really something that people were not expecting and was considered an unacceptable impact. The other thing is that in terms of the amount of value capture that can be generated to help pay for the project, which has happened in San Francisco around Trans Bay and is being planned for San Jose around Deredon, there are a number of examples of this happening in the region and have some pretty consistent metrics associated with it in terms of funding. And it is possible to generate in the high hundreds of millions of dollars. However, that's also associated with some combination of a million or more square feet of office and thousands of units of housing. And that seems not in scale with what we have contemplated in our area. I live near downtown. As you know, I strongly encourage, you know, greater density in our downtown area. And I think that the kind of development that it would take to help pay for something like this is significantly beyond anything that we would consider contemplating. So while the idea of having a train underground may seem really appealing, these are some of the challenges that have led Palo Alto to take that option off the table and would pose, I think, insurmountable challenges for us, speaking as an individual and not with any of my various different hats. Thank you.
Thank you. And Professor, I saw you shaking your head yes to a lot of those comments.
Yeah, no, I'd agree. I mean, it's just a very broad-brush estimate, but I would concur that some of the potential density increases could be, you know, fairly significant if development is incorporated. And in my, in the projects that I've seen, that is, if, in terms of, for something like a sequo process, for a project like this, it's, like I mentioned, it's usually not the train going underground that is a concern, it's the development going on, on top of the underground train, or if that's incorporated. So yes, I think that is a concern, and my intuition would be that you'd be looking at a significant amount of potential density increase. And I'd just add one note to the diesel train. So there are some engineering solutions in and around that, but just in general, there's a lot of issues with diesel train, you know, potential undergroundings, and that's part of the benefit, Caltrain at least, being, transitioning to electric for a project like this. But that's the only note there.
Thank you. I have one more public speaker this evening, and then I think we're going to let you go. But again, I can't say enough how much I appreciate your expertise this evening, Professor.
It's a pleasure.
Rick Johnson.
I live in West Marin. I had two questions. One may have been covered. With the trenching, it seems like there would be a big disruption of what is. And I guess if the solution is bypassing, then that is more disruption. So isn't there a lot of disruption is question one? The other one is, what about just drilling a tunnel? Just forget about trenching and drilling a tunnel is an alternate way to do it, and then, and then you can remove the rails once you have a rail service established. So that was the question.
All right. So, yeah, Professor, that'd be great. I appreciate it. And yeah, we didn't really cover trench, so if you could talk about how the costs of a trench are offset, that would be great.
Yeah, so the amount of potential disruption through a trenching project is obviously higher for trenching. It, you know, it depends on some of the technical details of the project, the degree of potential disruption, and the alternatives in terms of, you know, shoe-fly tracks and things like that. So, you know, that depends a little bit on some of the technical details of the project. In terms of costs, so in generally, like a tunnel boring usually is significantly higher cost than trenching. Now, I know there's the, there's some companies out there that are trying to significantly reduce the cost of tunnel boring, but just in general, you know, a cut-and-cover type tunnel or trenching with the current technology or notwithstanding potential significant decreases in the costs of tunnel boring, usually trenching is significantly less expensive. So, but that could, that could change, but usually, that's the case, so.
Any follow-up questions? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks. Just a couple of questions. One, a lot of what we've been talking about is the cost of construction, but right then there is the issue of maintenance afterwards. And in theory, you would think that something underground, the maintenance cost process would be vastly different than, you know, an at-grade or above-ground rail. So in the, the other projects that you have studied, like how does that work out? Does that fall to these JPAs that are created, or does it fall to like the rail authority? And is that factored into, you know, some of this land capture value, this ongoing maintenance cost?
Yeah, so yes, the, you know, clearly, the costs for maintaining the underground tracks will be different. And I shouldn't say in every case, but I, in most of the cases that I've seen, costs of right-of-way maintenance, track maintenance for the underground, usually those remain the responsibility of the rail agency, or if it's contracted out, the rail contractor. So usually, that's the case. And then if there are changes in the economics or, you know, the aggregate costs of maintenance, those are usually sorted out, yeah, in terms of funding in the long term through an agreement with the JPA-type agency. But usually, the actual responsibility remains with, with the agency or contractor.
Right, thanks. And of the projects, just a couple more that you've looked at, are there any that sort of align with a sort of, a commuter rail system versus something that is more of an urban rail system? And to that sort of question, you know, of the projects that you have looked at, is there one that you think sort of most aligns to the Menlo Park situation? Yeah, and so that, you know, the one that you think that, you know, most looks like the situation that we're looking at now?
Yeah. So it's hard to say what would be most aligned. So in terms of commuter rail, so there are actually several examples, high-speed rail in Europe, right? There's undergroundings of high-speed rail lines in Europe. So that would be something similar where it's a less dense area, maybe? And so, so there are examples of those, I think. Well, an interesting example that we've looked at before, and there's, there's been some, a good amount of study of it, with the Stuttgart 21 project in Germany. Now, it was a multiple line, so it would be more like if they were to underground the King Street track, right, tracks. But it was a high-speed rail. But it was a high-speed rail development, so they were building a high-speed rail line to Stuttgart. And Stuttgart 21 was a project where they were going to underground part of the lines approaching Stuttgart. So that might be one interesting example. And they worked out similar agreements like we're talking about between Deutsche Bank and the city in developing the project. So that would be close. They certainly ran into some SEQA-like issues in getting that project approved, or some issues in getting the equivalent of SEQA and permitting, right, for that project. But so that might be one example, probably larger in scale than what we're talking about today.
Councilmember Carlton.
Hi. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. And I want to make sure that we fully discuss all of this while we've got you here. So in terms of trenching, we're very aware of the creek. So in theory, we would have to go under, past the creek. And Atherton also hasn't been chomping at the bit to do this, so we have to assume that we're going to come up. Can you do that with the electrification, go dip under where Menlo Park is? Is that a problem?
Yeah. Well, it'd be hard for me to say definitively without knowing a little bit more about some of the technical specs. In terms of not so much the electrification, but a significant dip just in a commuter rail is usually technically infeasible. So just the, in terms of the grade change, it can only be a very low grade change for a rail system like this, generally. So, you know, any kind of lower part of the tunnel would need, like I mentioned, a long ingress and egress to do that, which would add to costs. So that might be the best I could.
So without Palo Alto or Atherton or our neighbors joining in, it would be technically infeasible to do the trench?
It'd be.
Probably.
Yeah, or it's more economically infeasible, you know, in terms of funding and cost-benefit trade-offs. It'd be very difficult to justify it.
I think the reason why it's considered to be something that people like is because of all of the impact it has on the side streets, getting to the library. And so I understand that. But you point on, you touch on my next question, which is, and I'm sorry, I know it's how long is a piece of string? And you haven't studied it and all this. But I have trouble wrapping my head around things like a lot and a whole lot more. Are you talking about compared to doing a split, like are we talking double, triple?
Oh, trenching versus boring?
No, trenching versus, like, I believe we talked about going up just a little bit with the grade as a preferred alternative.
Oh, grade separations, yeah.
So when you say a lot more, is that double, triple, quadruple? Like, I was just wondering, in general, give me some ballpark on how much is a lot? Because my idea of a lot might be different than Vice Mayor Taylor's a lot.
Yeah, so I am hesitant, of course. You know, I'm not trying to give you a technical assessment here. You know, at a zero. It would be very, very rough. So we're talking about order of magnitudes. For a significant tunnel, again, you know, don't hold me to that.
A trench, not a tunnel.
Yeah, well, or a trench or a tunnel. I mean, when I, the tunnel I'm referring to is more of like a cut and cover, so it's more expensive than just a trench. But similar construction. And so it would be, I would, I'd stick to that, you know, probably kind of on the order of magnitude. And I've seen the estimates of the grade separations. They're not exactly inexpensive for the city. But the cost of public works construction is very high in this area. So I generally don't, I don't like to err on the side that the cost estimate is too high in this area for construction because it almost is never, that's not our track record. Almost all construction cost estimates for public works in California are too low, right? As you're well aware. So that would be my intuition, I guess, if I could give that.
Double?
Oh, for the trench versus the grade separations, at least double.
At least double.
Yes, yes, for sure.
All right. So there's a, okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Just using as an example, not.
I don't think we have any more questions.
No, thank you so much.
Thanks so much for having me. Yeah, thank you so much for coming tonight, Professor. Really appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, we're going to go ahead now and move to our study session two, our City Manager Budget Presentation. Our finance and budget manager, Dan Jacobson, and management analyst, Brandon Cortez, will make the presentation.
All right, thank you and good evening. My name is Dan Jacobson, Finance and Budget Manager. And with me is Brandon Cortez, Management Analyst Two. We will be discussing the fiscal year 2019-20 Proposed Budget. So we'll start with some of the main takeaways of the budget, then work into the budget message and go over the overview and into a few more specific items. Then we'll do some historical comparisons to add context. And then talk about the Capital Improvement Plan and staff's estimation of the long-term fiscal output, outlook for the city. And then we will take questions and talk about some of the next steps in the process. One thing that I do want to echo is the City Manager's sentiment that staff are able to answer any question that you have, but we may not have time to answer all questions that you have. So staff is really looking for direction on which things you find most critical and the highest priority items by way of either questions about clarification or areas of additional investigation for alternatives and what's proposed here. So just a quick overview of the budget timeline. Goal setting really kicked off the budget development process. That happened in February. This was followed by budget principal adoption in March, on March 5th. On May 14th, the executive summary info item went out and was followed shortly thereafter by the proposed budget being published on the city's website on May 17th. We're here at the study session today, and public hearing is June 4th with budget adoption scheduled for June 18th. So for the fiscal year 2019-20 Proposed Budget, some of the key takeaways, what we'd like to start with is really that as compared to fiscal year 2018-19, there are no substantial changes proposed in this budget, with the exception of a handful of high-value areas that were identified to either save the city substantial amounts of money or provide services to the community. One major change that we will talk about throughout the course of the proposed budget is a plan to reduce the unfunded pension liability by the city. This was first presented in February as a clear strategy for how to address that and include supplemental payments to CalPERS, which addresses the city council's continued concern for fiscal prudence as well as the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury's findings in 2018 about unfunded pension liabilities. And the last thing, the last key item to note here is that it is a focus on maintaining the council's priorities. So this doesn't, the proposed budget is really intended to make progress on the priorities that have been identified rather than drastically changing the scope.
These next few slides will be introducing you to the themes of the proposed budget document and a review of the budget development process. Fiscal year 2018-19 has been and continues to be a very busy year. There have been a number of good accomplishments, and these are a few that the city has achieved over the past year. This list represents a variety of capital projects, community engagement projects, as well as policy initiatives. The theme of this year's budget document or budget is dedicated to continuous improvement. As Dan just stated, there are no major overhauls from the prior year budget, and staff was focused on looking for areas of improvement in a variety of arenas such as industry best practices as well as community suggestions. The first step in the budget development process is the City Council Work Plan, which was held in February and adopted in March. During this, City Council worked with the community to identify its priority projects for the forthcoming fiscal year. One of the major sources of revenue and expenditures for the city is the charges for services. Development projects have a multi-year lifespan that includes planning and building phases. Fiscal year 2019-20 is anticipated to be a gap year, where projects are in the planning phase but have not yet matured to the building phase, which is typically where revenue is collected. If projects do not go beyond the planning phase, the city does not incur a cost for the building phase. Even though this is a development gap year, the city is very busy with work on already-approved projects, and this is typical within the development activity lifecycle. Property tax growth continues to be strong, and historically, the city has taken a conservative approach to the ERAF, which is the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. And that has previously been budgeted at 50% in recognition of the fact that it is an at-risk revenue source. Staff is confident that the city will receive the money this year and has incorporated 100%, or 2.5 million, in this year's proposed budget. The long-term outlook has not changed. The money is still viewed as an at-risk source, and the forecast incorporates the assumption that it will not be returned to the city at some point in the future. It is anticipated that TOT is going to remain stable, given the strength of the economy at the current time. And lastly, the proposed budget incorporates a number of enhancements that have the highest impact to the community that can result in a substantial future cost savings or our regulatory needs or coordination efforts with other agencies.
So one area that we would like to highlight this effort to continuously improve is improvements to the budget. So one item that was different this year during goal setting was the prioritization of the Capital Improvement Plan projects. This was an effort to increase the transparency of how projects were prioritized and where they were relative to each other. Another area of improvement was investigation into the general tax sources of income for the city and to better understand the geographic distribution of some of those sources. This is presented as a table in the proposed budget and is also available on the city's website as a GIS or Geographical Information System Interactive Map. And then the last one that we would like to highlight is efforts to increase communication. So this can be seen in items such as the budget in brief, which was mailed to city residents, earlier release of the proposed budget document, and additional opportunities for council and the community to engage with staff prior to budget adoption. So the city council, staff, and the community continue to iterate on the budget in development process. And as an exemplar of that, the city has received the distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the second year in a row.
In the budget overview, we're going to go over a high-level overview of some of the numbers in the budget. And we're going to go over a review of the new budget requests that have been incorporated into the proposed budget. In 2019-20, all funds, the city has 48 funds ranging in scope from special revenue funds with restrictions set by council policy or statutes, capital improvement funds, which provide for long-term infrastructure investment, debt service, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. Across all funds, including the general fund, the city's proposed budget has 168 million in revenues and over 171 million in expenditures and requirements. This results in a negative $2.36 million deficit, resulting primarily from spending down capital improvement funds using accumulated fund balances planned. For the general fund, the city has over 70 million in revenues and just shy of 70 million in expenditures, resulting in $100,000 net revenue and a balanced general fund budget. In the budget documents, staff has included a number of new budget requests. These requests have been grouped into the following categories: community, good governance, and regional or regulatory initiatives. Community enhancements are items which the community is most likely to see at work due to their public-facing nature. The proposed budget includes the second phase of the library staffing mix, which is a request of three and a quarter FTE in order to allow for the continuation of extended hours at the branch library, as well as other projects such as the little free libraries. A reduction in temp help is going to offset some of the cost of this new FTEs. And FTEs, for people who don't know, are full-time equivalent employees. Next is the halftime senior civil engineer to help staff continue to make progress on already-approved capital projects and provide supervision of staff. This is a provisional FTE with a three-year contract set to expire in June 30th, 2022. Community Services is offering a program designed to increase programming and provide greater access to residents across the city. Also included is a contracted park ranger to help maintain Bedwell Bayfront Park. Duties will include patrol, first aid, surveillance, trail maintenance, and litter collection. And it may include weekend coverage at Kelly Park. And finally, the police are requesting, the staff has requested a mobile command center to allow police to have adequate mobile presence for coordination at the site of emergency situations. The good governance category are opportunities to improve general governmental operations from saving money, improving transparency, and increasing accountability. Included in the proposed budget is year one of the accelerated pension funding schedule. Under this schedule, the proposed budget increases supplemental payments to the unfunded pension liability by 1.8 million. This plan results in fully funding the city's pension plans within 10 years for miscellaneous and 15 years for safety, and has an overall savings of over 18 million in interest payments. Each year, the city council will have to take affirmative action to continue the accelerated payoff of the unfunded liability. At the recommendation of the Finance and Audit Committee and the IT Master Plan, staff is requesting a provisional FTE to add capacity necessary to oversee the upgrade of the city's financial systems, most of which are past or at their useful life. And finally, for this category, police have been using the same tasers and body cameras since 2013, which are no longer being maintained by the current supplier. This initiative will ensure that police have a non-lethal enforcement option and maintain the accountability afforded by body cameras. Regional or regulatory initiatives are items in which the city will partner with other agencies to improve conditions inside and outside the city's borders or bring the city into regulatory compliance. The city has entered a three-year agreement with the San Mateo County to address sea level rise. And additionally, the city is partnering with Redwood City, Mountain View, and Palo Alto to initiate a multi-city process to develop a peninsula bikeway. The Zero Waste Initiative appropriates previously-collected money to reduce the city's solid waste. And lastly, the National Fire Protection Agency requires all fire panels and sprinkler systems to be tested and inspected on a regular basis. This enhancement will allow the city to fall into compliance with NFPA standards.
So to help with this year's budget in context, we'll show, next we'll show a five-year comparison between budgets detailing the city's top revenue and expenditure sources, both at the general fund and all funds levels. So the general fund is the city's largest single fund and the source of the majority of its discretionary revenues, which can be used on any type of expenditure. The city's top general fund revenue sources are taxes, charges for services, and licenses and permits. The category listed here as other includes such revenues as franchise fees, fines, intergovernmental grants, and rent and interest income. The top two revenue sources have grown by 57% since the first year listed here, fiscal year 1516, and 5.1% since last fiscal year, and general taxes are anticipated to continue to grow. Between the proposed budget and the fiscal year 2018-19 budget, growth overall is flat at 0.1%, largely driven by where in the development lifecycle a number of projects are, and that is reflected largely in the charges for services category. On the expenditure side in the general fund, and in recognition that the city is a service organization, the top two general fund expenditure types are salaries and fringe benefits, which are provided to those staff who provide services to the community. The services category listed here consists of those services provided to the community by a variety of outside vendors other than staff. And here, the other category includes operating expenses like supplies and training, utilities, repairs and maintenance, and transfers to other funds. Since fiscal year 2015-16, the top expenditures have grown by 38%, including 10 and a half percent since the last fiscal year. The increase since last fiscal year is driven in large part by the addition of the aforementioned $1.8 million in additional unfunded pension liability payments, the increase in FTEs, and a lower expected vacancy rate, and planned increases to health benefits and salaries due to closed contracts with labor units. A reduction in the other category is seen in this year's proposed budget due to a $3.5 million capital pre-funding that occurred in the prior fiscal year. Moving on to the all funds category, which is all 48 funds, including Moving on to the "all funds" category, which is all 48 funds, including the general fund, the city continues to see strong growth in the revenue generated by taxes, as well as strong cost recovery for services charged directly to users. Other financing sources include those appropriations from prior years for the Capital Improvement Plan, which were not fully exhausted prior to the start of this shown fiscal year. This carryover capital is in recognition of the lifespan of complex long-term projects and provides additional transparency with regards to the true spending needs of the city. As shown in the graph, this category has grown in recent years, and there are a number of ongoing projects. On the "all funds" expenditure side, salaries and fringe benefits are still two of the top categories, but capital expenditures is the single largest category in recognition of that Capital Improvement Plan.
The city's Capital Improvement Plan is the non-operating portion of the budget, which deals with long-term durable projects. The city's proposed capital budget is a spending plan of over $72 million. It includes 33 projects requesting new funding in the current fiscal year for a total of $23.5 million. The additional 56 projects have had funds appropriated in previous years, and work will continue in this current fiscal year. These are a few examples that are included in the Capital Improvement Plan. They span a variety of city needs and have substantial funding needs. For a sense of scale, the four projects on this list have a total new money request in the current fiscal year of $15.2 million. While this year's spending plan includes over $72 million in capital projects, there are a number of planned projects in future years which aren't funded in the current fiscal year. While some have -- sorry about that. While some have revenue sources, not all are identified, and there are unfunded needs in the future years. This year's general fund is balanced with a small surplus, but the city will have to find funding sources for those projects in order to continue its ambitious Capital Improvement Plan. A potential source of funding will be discussed in the next section.
So next we'll look -- Next, we'll look forward to the long-term fiscal outlook. Each year, as part of the budget development process, staff prepares a 10-year forecast. During the last fiscal year, this included a stochastic model, which allowed for a variety of outcomes, showing a distribution of potential different ones. Staff has continued using that model this year, though it has incorporated a number of changes based on new information. Included in those changes is moving the assumed economic downturn up, based on the current economic conditions. It has incorporated new revenue projections and accelerated pension payments, and all proposed service-level enhancements that are included in the budget are included for the life of the 10-year forecast, including such things as provisional positions expiring at the end of their terms. What's shown on this graph is both the most likely outcome for revenues, expenditures, and net revenue. The most likely outcome is the average of all outcomes in that model that created a distribution, so this is what staff considers to be the most likely outcome. As you'll see over the course of this 10-year forecast, there are no projected deficit years, with a surplus increasing in future years, and in particular, in fiscal year 2019-30, you can see that the surplus is expected to nearly double from the previous year. This is the result of the unfunded pension liability for the miscellaneous plan being fully funded in that year. As a point of reference, staff has also shown the pessimistic case, which is yellow here. This is the net revenue over the course of the 10-year forecast. So this is a 25th percentile outcome, which is what staff would consider to be unlikely, but a bad unlikely case. Of note here are two deficit years. So in fiscal year 2324 and 2425, there are two projected deficits in this unlikely outcome. However, this is without using any of the levers of control by city council, such as use of reserves or expenditure adjustments, which are still under council's control to balance a budget in any given year. On the other side, in contrast to the pessimistic outcome, is the optimistic outcome, shown in green. So this is a 75th percentile outcome, also considered equally unlikely, but on the positive side, as indicated here, there are surpluses in all years, growing to a surplus in the fiscal year 2019-30 of greater than $10 million. Staff would like to point out that the most likely outcome is the single-point estimate of what we would guess, but the most likely outcome is likely between the optimistic and pessimistic outcomes shown. One other thing that we would like to highlight is these surpluses are before any transfers, so the Capital Improvement Plan, which has unfunded needs, could use some of these surpluses as transfers to help meet those future unfunded needs. So once again, going over the key takeaways, and the themes of this budget are financial continuity and stability with no major changes, except for those handful of items which were identified as major opportunities, a plan to reduce pension liability over the course of this -- starting with this proposed budget and into the future, and a focus on maintaining So the immediate next steps after this study session are the Proposed Budget Public Hearing, which is on June 4, and then Budget Adoption, which is scheduled for June 18. The budget must be adopted by the end of the fiscal year, so by June 30, 2019. And what staff is requesting from council is areas where you would like to see additional explanation for what's included in the proposed budget, or alternatives for any of the proposed items that are in the budget. And just as recognition of the fact that budget development each year is a tremendous undertaking, which takes a huge number of staff time and requires coordination from all departments, we would like to highlight some of the key contributors throughout the city. This is far from an exhaustive list, but just in recognition that the entire city has come together to develop this proposed budget. And so with that, we would be glad to take your comments or direction.
All right. Do we have any immediate questions, or should we take public comment first? We'll go ahead and take thirty public comment cards, Ms. Herron. Ms. Bramlett.
Good evening, council. I try not to walk around when people are speaking. My apologies. First, I want to thank staff for their work, and I will comment in more detail. I did want to make a few general and specific comments. One, I want to ask council to entertain the idea of considering a two-year budget cycle. Our neighboring city, Redwood City, is moving to that. I've done some research on it. I think there'd be a lot of advantages, which I won't go into detail tonight, in the interest of time. But one thing it would deliver is more time for community engagement. For example, you know, the public could be asked questions regarding how we would prioritize spending the money even before the goal-setting meeting. And I think it would be useful, when we have new council members coming, it would give you more time to get up to speed on these important documents before reviewing a budget. So I think there's a lot of merit to the idea, and I hope you will consider it. Regarding this budget, I am a little bit concerned about the staffing increases, though if I do the math right, it's about eight people, which -- that's a lot for a small town. And I have to ask if some of these are as high a priority a position as some other position. For example, a park ranger. I don't know if that's the best use of the Facebook campus expansion money, or if the people in Bellhaven have been asked about that. I do also hear louder concerns, such as traffic housing. Would a new position be better, you know, placed for that type of need? So I just want to introduce the general idea that that's a lot, and in general, I would like to see more transparency into our overall staff organization. The numbers that are reported in our documents are different than what I see at the government, the California Transparency Website. And I understand that has to do with temporaries, maybe contractors, and so forth, but it's a little bit unclear to me just how big a staff our city has, and if that's comparative with other cities. And because I don't see, you know, I see just high-level org charts, I also -- I don't know what people do. Now, I'm not saying they're not working and not hardworking, but I don't have a sense of day-to-day what people in a department actually do. And so I think more justification is needed, especially for some of these positions. I also want to make the point that when we hire, I'd like to see us post the jobs and, you know, try to seek people from outside the organization, and especially if we could balance diversity here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Are there any other speakers, Ms. Herron? No. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move to questions from council members regarding the budget, if any have any tonight. Councilmember Carlton.
I'm the only one with budget questions?
Others may still be formulating their questions right now.
All right, that's fine. I'm happy to see that we're increasing what we do and paying off the unfunded pension liabilities. What is the percentage? It just says we're going to pay more. Generally, is that coming percentage out of what we have left over, or is that now going to be a hard number every year? How are you approaching that?
So we have incorporated it into the budget in the general fund, so that the surplus that's shown as general fund is net of already making that $1.8 million of additional supplemental contribution. It's also incorporated into the baseline budget for the course of the 10-year forecast, so each of those surpluses is net of making those additional contributions. However, as Brandon mentioned, the city council would need to affirmatively make the choice to make a supplemental payment in each budget year.
Okay. I think that's great. And which group of the city staff's unfunded pension liabilities is going to be completely covered by 2019-30? You mentioned that -- you went through that kind of quickly. I was just wondering.
So the city's miscellaneous plan, this would follow a 10-year schedule, so the 10-year schedule outlined by CalPERS in their yearly valuation. It would follow a 15-year for the safety, so the complete payoff would be, as demonstrated here, would be miscellaneous being paid off. However, some portion of that additional surplus created in that year could be used toward paying off the safety plan faster at that point.
Okay, great. So one group would be completely paid off for unfunded pension liabilities. The second group, have you factored that in, or is that too far in the future to effectively?
There would be about four or five years left on that, on the unfunded liability for that group at that point.
Okay, great. You also -- sorry, you went through things really quickly. Obviously, it's -- we have limited time. What was the award that you've won for two years? And congratulations.
So the Government Finance Officers Association does a distinguished budget presentation award for the budget as a plan document, as a communication tool with the community. It has a number of criteria, which are basically best practices from the industry, and the city has won the award for two years in a row by following those guidelines.
Congratulations. And that's for the printed document, the printed budget that we put out?
That's correct, yes.
Excellent. That's good to know. So I was on the Parks and Rec Committee when we eliminated the park ranger position. We had more than one park ranger, as I remember. I don't remember if it was two or three, but I know we ended that because of what's now referred to as the Great Recession, to save money. And since then, I've heard of a lot of problems and complaints, so I understand why you're bringing back one of those positions. Have you looked into outsourcing that, or is that really more problematic? It's better to have someone on staff?
So the proposed budget actually includes that position as a contracted position rather than as a regular staff position.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you very much. And again, just looking at things briefly, why are we paying for the fire panel and sprinkler testing when that's under the jurisdiction of the fire department? Is it one of those things that we're doing because we're looking at other things and they're paying us back, or how is that working?
I would have to defer to our Public Works Director for the specifics of this one, but my understanding is that's a regulatory compliance issue.
Okay. I'll follow up with him then on the details. Thank you.
Okay. Just from a procedural standpoint, for our audience at home, or for those who may be here, so tonight, we had a study session on the budget. What that means in a study session is staff, for those who don't know, staff is presenting the budget so that council can ask clarifying questions in a public setting. Silence is not acquiescence to that budget. There is a hearing that will come later where the budget will be voted on, and questions will be asked again. Tonight is an open opportunity for staff to share the budget with us, to get an overview of that, for council members to take that information, ask questions, think about it. I'm sure there'll be questions that will be asked later on, as well, and council members one-on-ones, and then when they come back, we'll all go ahead and discuss it again in the approval. That being said, very much appreciate the budget presentation tonight. I personally, and I know my colleagues all appreciate, that the balance, the budget is balanced, that the budget is focused on paying down our unfunded obligations, and that many of the -- I think the budget reflects many of the priorities of the council and the community. There will be details, obviously, addressed in that as we go ahead and we have our budget hearing later on. And again, the community should understand that this is a nuts-and-bolts process, so what I would hope is that if people see something in that budget, they don't immediately think that something is out of whack. A budget process is one that's discussed in great detail as we go ahead and finite and create those little finite edges of how we go ahead and proceed. But very much appreciate where we are and what our outlook looks like. So thank you very much. Councilmember Nash.
I have a question on the maps that you gave us with district, revenue-wide district, which are great. Thank you so much. What is included in other taxes?
So this is hotel and business taxes, so this is transient occupancy tax, and this is business license tax.
Okay. I think our study session is over. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, I'm sorry, council member -- I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Just to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Carlton and also one of our public speakers made, is there a way to present the information just at a slower pace? I actually have probably about 10 questions, but they are not vetted to a point where I would ask them publicly, because you put so much information out there. So is there a way that you can do this a little bit in a little slower fashion? Because it was maybe 10 seconds per slide, maybe 20, with a lot of information there. Just looking at, I believe, your key takeaways, can you put that slide back up, please?
Yes, absolutely. And if there are any slides in particular that you have additional questions on, we'd be glad to return to those.
Key takeaways, budget assumptions. CIP non-operating. When it comes to the Bedwell Bayfront Park maintenance, you're contracting it out? And so as far as, I believe, there's money available to pay someone, is the money coming out of there, or is the money coming out of the general fund?
That service is out of the Bedwell Bayfront Park Maintenance Fund.
Okay. And is there a way to include in the budget, when something's being covered by, whether it's a city benefit to a development agreement, a way to be specific in the budget to say that's where the money's coming from, and it's not directly coming from our general fund?
So that's actually one of the initiatives that staff plans to undertake over the course of the next year and present at mid-year, is identify some of those development-related monies, and not only the revenue side, but the associated expenditures with them. There wasn't time to fully undertake that during the current budget cycle, but that is definitely one of the things that staff is investigating.
Okay. And was that on one of the lists here, where you put something on there, which I don't see the slide, so I can't tell you the exact words? It just went by too quickly for me to repeat.
So I believe it was incorporated in the city manager's transmittal letter, but I don't know that we touched on that too closely during this presentation tonight.
Okay. And then where the budget includes adding eight more FTEs, or what's the exact number?
So 4.75 is the net new number, so that's 3.25 in the library, 1.5 in Public Works, though one of those is provisional, or I'm sorry, one half of those is provisional for a three-year term. One of those is in Admin Services, also provisional for a three-year term, and there's one position removed from the Police Department as the red light photo enforcement program has ended.
And the staff that's for the library, was that something approved in the last budget?
So it was proposed -- So, it was proposed as a two-year plan during the last budget cycle, but budget adoption is required every year by council.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Nash.
Along the line of what Councilmember, Mayor Protem Taylor was saying, it would be really helpful if it would be possible to get a copy of the presentation, so we could just make notes on the, each page as it goes along. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next, all right, our next item this evening, actually, it's 6:42, so we're a little ahead of schedule, so let's go ahead and take a short break, because I think people won't be, wouldn't be expecting that we'd be here yet till 7:00 PM. So, we can go and go off the record, I'm sorry.
Well, I think Len Maderman is here to give the presentation on the Creek JPA, if you want to get that started.
Where is, okay. Okay, so actually, I'm getting requests from council members just to take a brief break.
Okay.
So, we're going to go ahead and take just a 10-minute break, and then we can go ahead and move on to the Creek JPA. Off the record. Okay. We're going to go ahead and bring the meeting back to order. Actually, sorry, our C E managers outside, so we're just going to wait a second. Okay. So, we're going to go ahead and bring the meeting back to order, and just for some housekeeping, I wanted to let anyone who know, who has come to the meeting expecting to speak or hear these items, that we're now pulling them from the agenda and continuing them. So, that would be item F2, award contracts totaling $511,857 to Town Ford Sales in Priority One Safety for Hybrid Vehicles and Outfitting. Then also, item H1, authorize the city manager to amend a contract with ICF Jones &amp; Stokes Inc. to prepare an environmental impact report for the proposed Willow Village Master Plan project at 1350 to 1390 Willow Road, 925 to 1098 Hamilton Avenue, and 1,005 to 1275 Hamilton Court, et cetera. So, those two items are being pulled right now and be continued. The public will be notified as to when they will be coming back onto the calendar. At this time, we're going to go ahead, and actually, we're going to go forward with the agenda as indicated. So, we're moving on to item D1, which is our proclamation of Public Works Week, and so I'm going to go ahead and come down to the podium.
So, I'm going to go ahead and, and read the proclamation, and then I have someone to introduce. So, we have a proclamation this evening recognizing May 20th, '26 to 2019 as Public Works Week, and there is a gentleman here with us, our maintenance worker, one in street maintenance, Gary Lundstrom, who is here with us this evening to accept the award. And we, Gary has been a full-time employee for nearly two years. One of his favorite aspects of the job is finding creative solutions to help his coworkers and the community. And we, this evening, are actually celebrating with Gary. Gary is one of the first ADEF drivers in our region to earn his Class B license, his Class B commercial driver's license. So, if everyone could please join us in a round of applause for Gary. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I'll go ahead and present the award to Mr. Lundstrom. Whereas public works programs, actually, Gary, would you like to come up and join me, and if the interpreter would go ahead and face me, that would be great. Whereas public works programs and services provided to our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry are vital to the efficient operation of these programs and services, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas public works personnel are among the first responders during emergencies and disasters, often remaining after the departure of other first responders to ensure that the services are restored and operations resume, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas public works, utilities, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of the professional engineers, managers, and employees, and whereas this year, the National Park Works Week theme, it starts here, emphasizes the impact of public works on modern civilization, from building and maintaining roads to providing clean drinking water and more, the quality of life in our community starts with public works. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, and our city council, recognize May 20th to '26, 2019, as Public Works Week. During this week, I call upon residents to recognize the contribution that public works employees make every day to residents' health, safety, and quality of life. If you could please join us in a round of applause.
(applause). Would you like to go ahead and speak so you could say a few words? Please.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this proclamation. So, I do work for the City of Menlo Park here, and I have really enjoyed my work here. And I hope that we will also provide the best work from now on. Thank you very much.
(applause). We'd like to take a picture. Yes, come on.
Okay. Our next item this evening is item D2, a presentation update on the San Francisco Creek JPA projects. Our San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority Executive Director, Len Maderman, will make the presentation. Mr. Maderman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's good to be here again. It's been a while. We have the pleasure of having Councilmember Combs serve on our board, and Mayor Protem Taylor serve as our very active alternate. So, thank you both for your service on our board. And so, we are providing an update today. It's great to see the Public Works Week celebration and commemoration. The projects that we do are essentially public works projects, and, and they're very large in the context of a lot of the projects that come before you. Our staff is here at the JPA, including Miko Harris Parker, who's a Menlo Park resident, as well as Tess Beiler and Kevin Murray. These are the staff of the JPA, the four of us. Okay, so we'll start with the presentation, and please interrupt me if you have questions, or we could do it at the end, however, however you prefer. Kevin? So, I'd like to start off with a description of the area we are in and the flood plains. This image shows the, the, cutting through the middle of the image from left to right is Highway 101. At the top is San Francisco Bay. San Francisco Creek is that blue-lined, nonlinear blue line that extends from the bottom of the image and then out to the bay. The areas in blue are the creek flood plain. This is a 100-year flood plain. The areas in green are the bay flood plain only, and the area in red is in both the creek and bay flood plains. And, and so, we have completed our first major project from the bay to Highway 101. I'm going to advance the slide. And what that does, where those kind of blue lines are, what that does is it takes the properties adjacent to the creek there out of the bay flood, creek flood plain, and just makes it the bay flood plain, so it's all green. Our next phase of project that I'll dive into today a bit is on the other side of Highway 101, upstream of Highway 101. And the objective of that project is to eliminate the blue, or the creek flood plain, and this, everything will be left in the bay flood plain. Our, our third project is along the shoreline, and that objective is to get rid of the bay flood plain, and that's what we call our SAFER project, which Menlo Park is a part of as well. Next slide. Okay, so the project that we finished in December of 2018, about six months ago, was between the bay and Highway 101, and this is what it looked like in the third year of construction when we were working on the levees. As you can tell, it's a pretty large project. It's about a mile and a half of creek, or three miles of shoreline, one and a half miles on the San Mateo County side, one and a half miles on the Santa Clara County side. And this is what it looked like at the end of the project. And, and so, this is the view from above the Friendship Bridge. Essentially, those two lines that you see in the water, you want to, can you point that out, Kevin? Those two lines, that was the, that's the old creek channel, and as you can tell, it's much widened into the Palo Alto Golf Course. And the objectives of the project are to protect against any creek flow with 10 feet of sea level rise. It has those other benefits that are listed. It was, including the work on the highway, it was a $77 million project. Next slide. SAFER Project connects to it, and that is along the shoreline up to Marsh Road on the north side, and then down to the Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Palo Alto Mountain View border on the, on the south side. And I won't spend a lot of time on the SAFER Project today, because we're trying to focus on the, on the creek work upstream. Kevin? Just the final thing on the SAFER Project, this is the, again, the image from the other angle of San Francisco Creek, the completed project. We had an opportunity to, to pursue some external funding, which we did, and, and the result of that is to take the creek project and extend it upstream, I'm sorry, extend it north between East Palo Alto and the Marshes, and that's where that yellow line is. Kevin, could you, and then the FEMA flood plain map shows the area of the creek and areas north of that, and essentially, what we would do is work from, shoot, trying to, we would work from where the creek is ending to north of Bay Road. It's that yellow line. That's in East Palo Alto, and it would remove about 90% of East Palo Altons from the bay flood plain, which is about 1,600 properties. In the Menlo Park area, we would do work on the north side of Highway 84 around the PG&E substation as it, you approach the Dunbarton Bridge, and that would be to enable the restoration of over 600 acres of marsh, which is part of the Salt Pond Restoration Project area. Okay, so now to turn our attention to San Francisco Creek. This shows the area of the creek. The Highway 101 is on the kind of upper-right portion, cutting through the image. The bay is to the far upper-right. And now that the project from the bay to Highway 101 is done, the area of least capacity is the Pope Chaucer Bridge, and you see 5,800 next to Pope Chaucer there, and that is the amount of cubic feet per second that can pass underneath the culvert that's underneath Pope Chaucer Bridge. And so, essentially, what we're, in 1998, the flood of record was about 7,500 at Pope Chaucer Bridge, and, and so there was flooding at Middlefield Bridge a little bit, and there was a lot of flooding at Pope Chaucer, and then there was flooding downstream as well. And, and the maximum that can reach Pope Chaucer and downstream is 7,500 because of Middlefield sitting there. So, we're not planning on touching Middlefield, but the idea is to replace Pope Chaucer and then do work downstream so that no flooding occurs downstream of there. The current conditions, as I said, the maximum amount, can you go back, please? The maximum amount that can get to Pope Chaucer and areas downstream is 5,800, so below that, it doesn't flood. Above that, it would, and, and so, then above 7,200 would also flood at Middlefield if we saw that again. Okay, excellent. So, we have an EIR that came out, and it's big. It's 885 pages, and it talks about the project to replace the bridge and do work downstream as well as alternatives. We have public hearings coming up. The first public hearing is in Menlo Park, and it is this Thursday at 7:00 PM. There were postcards that were mailed, this is not a postcard, but it's the same thing that was mailed, and to residents of Menlo Park, about over 2,000, as well as residents of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto regarding these various meetings. And the meeting, the first meeting, as I said, is in Menlo Park. It's up at the Laurel School Upper Campus. And we'll talk about the EIR and receive public comments. We have public comment cards that people can fill out or make verbal comments. Okay. Next slide. So, here's some of the outreach that we did. We're sending out a total of 13,000 postcards and next door, and websites, and print ads, and the local papers, et cetera, et cetera. And thank you for the opportunity today to also talk about these meetings and encourage people to come. The objectives of the project fundamentally protect life and property, enhance habitat, recreational opportunities, minimize maintenance of the creek channel, and not preclude future actions to increase the level of flood protection. We had 17 alternatives in the EIR. We pretty quickly reduced it to three alternatives plus the no-project alternative. The three alternatives including, include the one that I mentioned of replacing the bridge and doing some widening downstream. There was an alternative to construct one or more detention basins in the There was an alternative to construct one or more detention basins in the upper watershed. That would be west of Highway 280 on Stanford land. And the third alternative, replace the bridge and build flood walls. So, we'll talk about those three. So, this is a summary of the preferred alternative, which we call Channel Widening, replaces the bridge, which is shown in kind of pink, purple. And then the green areas are areas of widening. We would remove where there's concrete in the channel. And the blue area is upstream of university. I'll talk about that and show a picture in a few minutes. The flood wall alternative has flood walls not more than two feet high, but in a larger extent of creek channel. So, if you want to go back again, Kevin, and then forward, you can see the difference between those two alternatives. Clearly, there's more area where flood walls would be needed, but we wouldn't do widening. So, that was that alternative. And then the third alternative is the upstream detention. And it is to add additional protection by capturing water upstream before it reaches the flood plain. And there were essentially two areas of potential detention basins that we analyzed. The one on the far right is closest to 280. It's at Webb Ranch where there's a UPIC farm. And then upstream of there is the site of a former plant nursery called the Bowing Plant Nursery. And then upstream of there is Searsville Dam and Reservoir. And Stanford has a separate project to modify the dam and that would be our first choice for upstream detention. If Stanford chooses not to pursue that project, then we would pursue one of the other two projects. Kevin? So, here's a summary of kind of where we're getting the addition, what the result of these efforts would be. In yellow shows the area between the bay and Highway 101 that we completed. That's to increase capacity by about 4,500 cubic feet per second to 9,400 with sea level rise. And so, if you look at the bottom, it says the 100-year event, storm event is the, is 8,150 at Pope Chaucer. Obviously, with 9,400, we're exceeding that and we're fine. The next phase is from Highway 101 through Pope Chaucer and that's to increase capacity by 1,700 to a total of 7,500. The reason that we chose 7,500 is that's generally the natural capacity of the channel in that location. So, to go beyond that would require a much more substantial project. And fortunately, maybe you could say it also equals the biggest flood we've had since we've been measuring water in, for the last 89 years. And so, it's a, it's a major and meaningful achievement to achieve that. The last piece would be detaining upstream about 1,000 cubic feet per second. And what you'll notice is if you take 7,500, if we achieve that and you add 1,000 to that, you get to 8,500 and that's above the 100-year event, which is what our objective is. So, again, we're going back to the channel widening and I'll show some pictures of what that looks like. In terms of Pope Chaucer Bridge, the existing bridge is on the top half of this image. And as you can see, it's, under the bridge is a culvert with a flat bottom. The image at the bottom shows what the proposed new bridge would look like at Pope Chaucer. Menlo Park is on the left side, Palo Alto on the right side of both of these images. And in addition to a new bridge and roadway, it would also have a new look in terms of the size of the bridge, sides of the bridges. And there would be, we would restore to the creek bottom stream function by creating pools and other features for fish. Right now, it's basically just a flat surface that doesn't serve any stream or ecosystem value. So, that's what the Pope Chaucer would look like. Going to the widening pieces downstream, at West Bay Shore Road, we would start off, all the alternatives have us widening the creek at West Bay Shore Road to align with the project that we just completed from West Bay Shore or Highway 101, if you will, to the bay. And that increases the capacity there between East Palo Alto and Palo Alto. Next area of widening is substantial area of widening, areas of widening between Newell Road and Euclid. Euclid, of course, is the, is the street that divides East Palo Alto from Menlo Park. So, between Newell and Euclid on the San Mateo County side, we would do widening. But all the widening would be of this fashion, would be on the Palo Alto side of the creek. And if you look at the image on the bottom right, it shows sacked concrete in the channel and there's a picture of it, obviously, in the, in the upper left. And if you, when we advance the image, you'll see what it looks like when we do the widening. We're essentially remove that sacked concrete, remove some earth behind it and then build what's called a soil nail wall. We don't have room in these areas because of private homes in Palo Alto to turn that into a completely earthen bank and scale it back because then we would be taking backyards and we're not really in the business of taking backyards. So, we remove sacked concrete, that's from the 1950s and 60s, and we replace it with a wall behind there that we think is going to be more stable also behind those properties. So, that's that part of the project. The third part of widening is there is this very, very large concrete terrace structure in East Palo Alto, in the creek, within the jurisdiction of East Palo Alto, across from, essentially across from Manhattan Avenue, like where the Four Seasons development is. And so, we would remove that. There, we do have some area to turn that concrete area into a natural creek bank. So, we'll take advantage of that and restore that part of the creek. All right? This is at University Avenue Bridge is on the, is on the left side of the upper picture. And we're, East Palo Alto in 2013 put in that wooden wall where there was flooding in December of 2012. And so, we would replace that wooden flooded wall at the same height. We replaced that wooden wall with a, with a structure that's more permanent. Kevin? The preferred project has two significant and unavoidable impacts. One is during construction is noise and we'll talk about that a little bit. And then another one is a cumulative effect also during construction of air quality. It's proximity to Highway 101 and the air quality issues associated with the highway plus the construction of this project makes it significant and unavoidable. Otherwise, we have significant impacts that we believe can be mitigated to a standard of less than significance. And there are a bunch of them and they're listed there in purple during construction in all of those areas. And in terms of permanent impacts that can be made less than significant, they're in three areas of biology and geology and hydrology. Kevin? So, so I, out of all those, go back to the last slide for a second, Kevin. Of all that list, I picked out a few that I thought the community would be most interested in. And essentially, that's trees, trucks, traffic and noise. All right? So, we'll take a look at those. Trees, there will be impacts on trees. We're going to avoid them as much as possible. I know that's a, that's a concern of everyone in the, in all the communities, including in Menlo Park. There are different species of trees that, that will be taken out and they will be replaced per the various ordinances of Palo Alto, Menlo Park and East Palo Alto. Kevin? I wanted to point out something. The only area of Menlo Park that's going to be really under construction is Pope Chaucer Bridge. Everything else is downstream of Menlo Park. This is an aerial that shows the Pope Chaucer Bridge. Woodland Avenue you see is indicated there and Pope Street. And, and if you want to advance the slide, it shows what that bridge looked like in 1991. And I want to point out the area that's different. Do you want to go back and forth again? So, on the downstream side of the bridge, now, there are a lot of trees, right? Do you want to go back, Kevin? Do you want to point out where the downstream? Okay, so all of that is, are trees right now. And there's a little, that's an area of trees that has a little path and that used to be a vehicular part of the bridge where people drove to make a right turn on Woodland from Palo Alto. And that's what's shown in the 1991 picture. But that was closed in the 90s and trees were planted and they grew. And people will, and all of that, go ahead if you want to advance it. All of that is shown here, all of those trees are growing on top of the concrete culvert. So, people are going to miss that area. I will miss that area, you will miss that area, but it's all part of the concrete structure of this bridge. And there's no way to replace the bridge or deal with this culvert without getting rid of the concrete. And so, that's just part of the project and there's, I didn't want to try to hide behind it or anything, but just say this is an issue and it's not, there's not something that can be dealt with other than removing those trees and planting new ones, which is our plan. Do you want to go for it? Okay, so, traffic and trucks. We had a consultant, a subconsultant to our environmental consultant that did a traffic study. And the result of that traffic study of all these green circles or the different intersections they looked at, including five in Menlo Park, the only one that posed a concern was at Middlefield and Woodland. And this is only during the closure of the Pope Chaucer Bridge during construction and it will be closed, we anticipate, for eight to nine months. And so, during that period, all of the intersections were found to be fine in terms of significant impacts, but the impact at Middlefield was found to be significant. And so, what our EIR has proposed is a temporary traffic light at that intersection. Now, I know the city is looking at that intersection anyway in terms of the traffic issues there. And we've been talking with the city, starting a conversation about kind of what that intersection looks like, how our project may help the city to achieve its long-term ends or what the city may do otherwise related to that intersection outside of our project. So, you want to advance the slide? In terms of trucks, during construction, the maximum traffic is 60 trips per day, 20 truck trips and, truck trips and 40 worker trips. You want to advance? That the largest anticipated number of workers at one time is at the bridge and that's 20. And that the channel widening activities require the most construction hall trips and that's again outside of Menlo Park's jurisdiction. And the way that people would get to, the trucks would get to Highway 101 is through University Avenue or Embarkador Road, depending on where the widening occurs. Now, there will, of course, be truck traffic associated with Pope Chaucer. And that, the entry point for the, for that work, those trucks, is on Woodland Avenue and it's about five houses upstream of Pope. So, it's just to the west of Pope on Woodland Avenue is how they would enter the creek. All right? Noise. So, all of these sites where work would be done will have noise associated with it, not surprisingly. This is pretty major construction work. We are looking for ways, especially at Pope Chaucer, to reduce the impacts of noise, but there will be impacts. And there will be work that's done immediately adjacent to the four properties that are at the corner of Pope and Woodland or Pope and, or Chaucer and Palo Alto Avenue. So, in Menlo Park, those two properties will have work immediately adjacent to their front yards, but we don't anticipate needing any easements or anything from them and it will just be noticeable to them. Construction truck traffic would also generate intermittent noise. So, okay, summarizing, the Beta Highway 101 project is done and, and that level of protection we talked about upstream, getting to 7,500 in the flood plain area and completing this project by December of 2022. We hope that it could be a year earlier and it could be, but there are a few things that have, important things that have to happen before we can start construction. Kevin, do you want to go to the next one? And so, this is the flood plain during the 1998 level event, what it looks like now according to the models. And we'll advance the slide and we'll show you what the flood plain would look like after the project. So, you can see the flood plain resulting from Pope Chaucer being eliminated. That's a short, short way of saying the objective, but also other areas of the flood plain downstream in Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. The process, we, in December 2016, we released what's called a Notice of Preparation, which is a notice to the community saying we're doing an EIR. We had scoping meetings in January and February of 2017. Do you want to advance this slide? We had a, an additional process, a stakeholder process of two public meetings and a public tour in October of that year. We came out with a draft EIR on April 22nd, Earth Day this year. We now have the draft EIR public meetings, you want to advance it, and, and presentations to city councils. Later this summer, we plan to have a final EIR out after we take into consideration the comments and bring it to the JPA Board for approval in the fall. In the fall of 2019 this year and spring of 2020 is when we're going to be focused on permitting as well as, do you want to advance it? The easements and financing. And we, those are the three biggies. We need land easements, we need to figure out how we're paying for it and we need permits. And so, the figuring out how to, the land easements, there's really nothing in Menlo Park that we need to worry about in terms of land. Most of the easements are on the Palo Alto side where we're doing that widening because property owners own to the middle of the creek, that's why. In terms of permitting, we're going to apply for permits this summer and it is what it is. We've been working with the regulatory agency on this project, agencies on this project for several years, but those, that can take time. And then financing. Financing is really the biggie that will involve Menlo Park as well as the other cities, Santa Clara Valley Water District and San Mateo County. And we're starting that conversation at the JPA Board level now. And then two years of phased construction, we would start, if we can get the easements, financing and permitting done by next April or so, then we can start construction in 2020. That is possible, but very optimistic and in which case, I think it's safe to say we'll start in the late spring of 2021 and again, a two-year construction. So, we'd be done by the late 2022, like November or something like that. And I think that's the last slide. Thank you very much. Take your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions before I open up to public comment? No. Do we have any public comment cards? No. Okay, coming back up from public comment, are there any questions? Councilmember Carlton?
All right. Hi, it's good to see you again.
Hi, good to see you.
Thank you for coming. How was the 100-year event impacted by sea level rise? I know you touched on it briefly, but if we plan for 85 or whatever, I assume that that, that 100-year planned point is going to change in 50, 75 years, which kind of negates the whole 100-year thing. I was just wondering how you factored that in.
Yeah, so, thank you for that question. The, currently, the tides extend beyond Highway 101, almost to Newell Bridge. Okay. And as I said, on terms of the project that we completed construction on, that's during this, basically the maximum creek flow that could see that, to be seen at that location during a sea level that's 10 feet above today's high tide. Okay. So, and that's, as you may know, that's a very aggressive strategy in terms of dealing with sea level rise. In fact, it's the largest sea level rise project that's been built in the state of California to date. In terms of the work upstream of Highway 101 where there are currently tides, that's our same assumption at West Bay Shore Road, okay? In terms of the work that we would do right at West Bay Shore where tides or influence the creek, would be to that same standard that I just talked about for the downstream part. Beyond Newell, where this project picks up again, it's beyond the reach of those tides. So, and the last piece, I would say, is our, our objective for this Pope Chaucer through Highway 101 stretch is not really the 100-year event. If we were to, as I said, the natural channel capacity in that area is about 7,500 cubic feet per second and that's below the 100-year event. And we, we, really, there are two fundamental goals that I have for all of this work. I want our projects to be meaningful and I want them to be achievable. And to go beyond this 7,500 made the project not achievable in the near term because of all the costs, land and permitting issues that we would run into. But it's still meaningful in our minds because it takes us to the flood, biggest flood we've seen in 89 years. And as we look to upstream, we can add to that through detention basin. And that's why we and the cities have impressed upon the county of Santa Clara and Stanford the value of upstream detention, is that that's the really only way we can get people out of flood insurance program is by adding that to the work that we're proposing.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Just out of curiosity, does that mean that Webb Ranch is going away?
No. So, Webb Ranch would only be built as a detention basin if Stanford chooses not to pursue its preferred project at Searsville, which is possible. They may not pursue it. If that happens, then our intention is to pursue a project of Webb Ranch. If we did build a web project of Webb Ranch, right now, it's a UPIC farm. You're probably familiar with it if you're asking the question. And it's near the horse stables and all of that, right? The idea is-
So, the stables might go away too? So the stables might go away too?
No, nope, nope.
Okay.
At Web Ranch, what we would do is essentially we'd take the current elevation of Web Ranch and the farm, and we'd lower it by 10 feet. It'd still be a farm, it'd still be a parking, I mean, it could be all kinds of things that are currently used. Stanford, after its previous general use permit in 2000, built detention basins on the campus that serve as athletic fields. There's, and the Santa Clara Valley Water District Mountain View is building McKelvey Park right now as a detention basin. There are multiple uses of detention basins, so Web Ranch could stay for whatever purpose Stanford desired, but it would be deeper and have the capacity to accept storm water during a major event.
Okay, great. And I hate to bring up old contentious things, but there was this big widening contentious of Chaucer Bridge. People were concerned that it might be widened, and that might attract more traffic through the neighborhood. How has that been addressed?
Well, it's actually, as a structure, it's going to be less wide. In terms of roadway, it's going to be exactly the same as it is now.
Okay, great. I just want to put that on record for people.
Yeah, there's no increase in the size of the roadway, and that's all there is to it, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Any other question?
I'm it.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, Lynn. And we've sort of gone back and forth on a lot of these issues, but just for the sake of transparency, could you give the council a little bit more detail on what you see as some of the viable options when it comes to financing? Because that is, again, the big, the big question, like, who pays how this all gets paid for?
Yeah. I'm going to pull up a funding slide to help answer that question. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so here's, here's the funding, kind of summary on the JPA. The first paragraph, if you will, or sentence, is just operational, and that's about $1 million. And we get that from our five jurisdictions principally, about 90% of our money, 90 to 95. In terms of capital project funding, our history, which I think is instructive, since 2010, is $123 million, 46% local, a lot of that from the Santa Clara Valley Water District countywide ballot measure that passed several years ago. 28% state from grants that the JPA has secured, 8% private, 18% federal. Okay. Future funding sources, so this gets to your question. The way that we paid for a part of the project downstream, as I said, that was $77 million total, was contributions from either the general fund or some specific funds within the various five jurisdictions. Menlo Park contributed $800,000 to that effort, which was great, especially because that didn't involve construction in Menlo Park. But Menlo Park understood that it enabled work upstream, right? So that is one option, is to just say, we have a project that we anticipate costing right now between $30 and $35 million. We have, of that amount right now, we have about $10 million raised. We have another $5 million of a grant that we're on the waitlist for, may happen, may not happen, whatever. And then we're submitting another grant application in about two weeks for another $3 million, Prop 1. So we're on the train to try to get more money for this, but there will be, and then we're working with the Corps of Engineers, which could provide a maximum $10 million if that happens. Given all of that, and given the cost, we know that there's going to be a need to raise more money outside of these grants and what we have in hand. Here are some of the options. Bay Restoration Authority obviously doesn't apply to this part of the project. Grants Corps of Engineers does, a new finance district does, and we've done a feasibility study at the JPA of a multi-city finance district. I know that Menlo Park has thought about these things also in regards to, and there was a presentation earlier today that included the Community Facilities District as an idea. So we obviously don't want to trip over each other on that process by both, by going to the voters too many times for public works type projects. But that's an option. We're looking at aggregated flood insurance, and I could talk for a long time about that, but essentially it's privatizing flood insurance, using some of the savings to fund capital work. There's a lot going on in that right now, in terms of trying to develop a project for us, working with, we're working with Financial Services Industries on that. And then in companies, utilities, developers, that's more in East Palo Alto for this stretch. There's proposed development in East Palo Alto, in this area of East Palo Alto, close to the highway, and so we've been working with the developers in that area. There's not a lot of industry or business as much in Menlo Park or Palo Alto in this stretch. But we have utilized them previously. PG&E, for example, provided $10 million to the downstream project. Cap and trade carbon market, that's more for the shoreline. So I would say contributions from agencies is one option. Continued, Corps of Engineers in addition to the grants we have, although there will still be a hole, the flood insurance idea, which may not be ripe in time for the next six months or eight months to nail that down, but it's out there. Those are kind of some of the things we're looking at.
And then one, thanks for that answer and for the slide. And one final question, so seems like in a lot of projects in the area, all roads lead to Stanford, and so there is their Searsville project which would answer that. A lot of what we're trying to accomplish are, as you mentioned, some other detentions projects. What sort of, so the timeline for this aspect of the project is clearly sort of, you know, baked out. What's, what are you looking at as the timeline to resolve that Stanford question, right? Where we see that, like, there isn't been the movement that we would like regarding Searsville, and that then there are these other options that we possibly, that the JPA possibly needs to pursue or look into more thoroughly?
Yeah, well, we've been talking with Stanford for years on this exact topic, and that conversation has accelerated in 2018 in terms of the technical details, hydrology and sediment transport and things like that. What I have said, and what our EIR says, is that at the time at which we are ready to start construction of this project, if it's not clear that Stanford is pursuing permits for its detention basin at Searsville, then we will, we will begin the planning and design of a detention basin. So that's probably in two years.
So the resilience bonding issue is actually intriguing, then with the insurance companies. Are you only looking at insurance companies, or are you also looking at public resilience bond, for instance, working with the State Treasurer's Office?
So right, so right now, exactly what we're trying to do is see if insurance companies, let's see, how do I describe this?
I understand the difference in premium of risk, it's, I understand.
Yeah, to see, to see if it's financially viable for them.
Right. There's a lot of work in this area, the resilience, and actually, insurance companies are actually looking, I know a little bit about this, and they're looking for the right, the right project as a baseline metric, and then where you can show the improvement. Yours actually does do that in a very, in a very, in a way that's very metricizable. So I think that's brilliant. Have you guys looked into hazard mitigation grants from the state?
Well, so the $3 million I mentioned for Pope Chaucer is from that program, HMGP. And the money that I mentioned previously for the shoreline work in East Palo Alto and around the PG&E substation, that's also HMGP.
Okay.
So, yeah. And the $5 million waitlist, that's also HMGP, yeah.
Great, excellent. All right, did anyone have any other questions? No? I'd like to circle back with you on that, on the...
Oh, yeah.
I can make some suggestions to you on banks who are looking at resilience bonds.
Sounds great, thank you.
We can go ahead and move on to the next topic.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. This evening, we have three public comment speakers. And if you are here, and you know, folks, some people walked in, just want to let you know, and I'm just going to, rather than actually name the exact items, if you're here for Facebook, or if you're here for the cars, they're not on the agenda tonight, they've been polled. So with that, we're going to go ahead and take public comment. Our first person is Mr. Ron Shepard.
I'm Ron Shepard, speaking to you as a Menlo Park resident. And although my reports about FAC committee, I'm not reporting as a member of FAC. I have been annoyed at FAC meetings when discussing detailed, detail related to a general topic listed on the FAC agenda. Staff has requested that discussion cease as the item has not been properly agendized, and continuing discussion will be a violation of the Brown Act. In preparing for our agenda for the May 22 meeting, that would be, would have been tomorrow, the vice chairman and I spent considerable time to include all items we wanted to discuss so as not to have discussions limited by allegations of Brown Act violations. The agenda for the May 22 meeting was sent to Dan Jacobson Tuesday, May 14th, at 2:08 via email for formatting and distribution. On Friday, Lenka Diaz emailed me stating she would like to discuss the agenda. However, I was out of town in Eureka and unavailable. Staff's reformatted agenda was sent to the vice chair and me about 11 o'clock on Friday, May 17th. That's, they got it Tuesday, we got the report on Friday. We both discussed this reformatted agenda and informed Lenka it was not acceptable. She notified me that our agenda was generally not in compliance with the Brown Act and city policies, but was not specific. She'd also notified me that Dan Jacobson had canceled our meeting and had emailed FAC members as to its cancellation. I view this treatment as administrative bullying. Staff must recognize that their role is support, not policymaking. After your review, should you agree with my conclusions, involved staff should be severely reprimanded. I would conclude that FAC is not the only committee receiving this treatment. Should you not agree with me, I would submit resignation. In my desire to make sure that governmental entities be responsive to its constituents' needs, fulfilling them on a long-term, cost-effective basis, I might be more effective working as a private citizen, unencumbered by the Brown Act and administrative compost. I have copies of emails, the two agendas for you to look at, so who should I give them to?
Mr. Shepard, you can go ahead and provide them to the city attorney or the city manager who can provide them to us. We're not allowed to actually respond to public comment.
No, I understand that.
This is a non-genetized item. And so I'll go ahead and do that.
I do expect somebody would respond later, quickly.
As I, I actually indicated you off the record earlier how we're going to go ahead and proceed, Mr. Shepard. I also just, so at this point, we're going to go ahead, not supposed to, not supposed to be responsive to public comment. Our next speaker this evening is Sudi Tronson.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Sudi Tronson, and I'm a resident in Menlo Park. And although I am on the Finance and Audit Committee, or FAC as Ron Shepard mentioned, I'm representing this as a residence. I would like to make three points and a recommendation. First, there is a broad agreement about the role of an independent audit committee. In brief, the audit committee, in its advisory role, provides independent oversight of auditing and internal control for the city as it relates to financial and the other reporting practices, compliance, ethics, efficiency, and transparency of operations. An audit committee should also provide a forum, separate from management, in which auditors and other interested parties can candidly discuss concerns. To ensure committee's independence and effectiveness, no governing body member who exercises managerial responsibilities that fall within the scope of the audit should serve as a member of the audit committee or attempt to influence it. Second point, the role of the Menlo Park FAC as originally envisioned is consistent with these ideals. Unfortunately, that is now how it's practiced. Our role is advisory without implementation authority, which means we review, discuss, and deliver recommendations and report observations so that the council and staff may consider and act upon them, either approving, disapproving, or nothing, or something in between. However, in short, I see a general pattern of staff resisting attempts to meet this mandate. We have discussed issues a few times over the past couple of years at smaller meetings with staff. Unfortunately, this kind of sidebars do not necessarily have recorded minutes. This has led to years of undelivered promises. That is one reason I'm encouraging that these topics be discussed publicly, even though smaller groups are more efficient. Third, the past few weeks have proven the uphill battle our committee has had fulfilling its duties. There is a reason, as stated above, that an audit committee should provide a forum, separate from management, and although staff is not officially a member of the committee, it is, as it should, attends the meetings. The problem is not the attendance and the participation, in fact, it is welcomed and necessary, but the problem lies in the attempts at curtailing and controlling the committee. I provide two recent examples. For the first time, FAC made a direct public presentation of its recommendations just a couple of months ago here, even though that's how it should be, that the committee itself makes the presentations, not the staff. Committee had to strongly oppose and reject staff's numerous attempts at revising committee's presentation. Just this past Friday, as Mr. Shepard mentioned, the previously scheduled meeting of the Finance and Audit Committee was unilaterally canceled at the 11th hour by staff as it did not approve of the agenda prepared by the chair and myself. So as a time when we are striving, all cities are striving for greater accountability and transparency, it's troubling that we're facing these issues.
Ms. Tronson?
In closing, this is not a personal issue, it's directed at anyone in particular, but rather an organizational issue, and invite our cities, hardworking staff, to work with us toward achieving these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. And for my colleagues, I know you may have questions, I encourage you to please follow up with people outside of the hearing, we're not allowed to go ahead and respond to these tonight. Next speaker this evening is Ms. Bramlett.
I wanted to follow up to the email that I sent you all requesting that the role, you initiate the process of evaluating the effectiveness of the Menlo Park advisory committees. What we heard tonight, you know, I've heard, there are problems. When I served on the Library Commission, it was a comment, you know, behind this, you know, one-on-one, what is the role? I felt like quitting. In fact, I know people who did quit. I'd go to meetings, and I would hear the same. I mean, I, you know, have observed or experienced similar to extent of not taking the public in, in a good way on these committees. So I think it's time to ask the residents what they think. In a neutral environment, I see other cities doing that. What we're doing here is not the Ten Commandments. I see a lot of differences, you know, I've done research on this. I think there's a much better way. Because residents sign up, they want to have a meaningful role, but it may feel more like we've got a Stepford Wives-type organization where, you know, we're scripted. In fact, I was at a meet, one meeting last night where the chair was in fact reading from a script, and I've seen this before. And I would rather people were authentic, and we were open about what we need to work on and work on it. You know, this isn't a TV show. You know, we should, it just shouldn't be like this. So I want to ask that, we have some kind of venue followed up with best practice research designed to find out what the residents serving think. And I would, you know, have them serve a certain amount of time just so, you know, they have experience with what they say. Based on my own research of it, I think one best practice suggestion would be to give them a list of activities in terms of how they actually carry out the advisory role. That seems to be a missing gap, and when work plans come before you, I have to ask, does that reflect the advisory role? And I would also broaden it to let them advise the staff. It's advisory, after all. This artificial barrier limits information... This artificial barrier limits information sharing. You know, I'm, I've been actively involved. I don't really know exactly what the library does day-to-day. So my email gave you quite a few suggestions. You know, right now, we have a form of taxation without representation. Those committees should be a strong pillar in your overall ability to provide strong operational stewardship of our town, and right now, they're not. So I hope you will do something. Please let me know how I can be of help. I've thought about it. I have ideas, and look forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Adina Levin, Member of Police Chiefs Commission, speaking for self. I just wanted to connect the dots with a couple of the agenda items up tonight. I was able to look up the cost from the Palo Alto report of the trench option in South Palo Alto, which was estimated at 750,000 to, 750 million to $1 billion. So it's certainly much more expensive than the other types of grade separation options, but less expensive than the two to four billion-dollar tunnel options. Compare the previous item about the creek, where we're talking about paying for a project that would be about $35 billion, and the amount of multiple funding sources, and the effort of cobbling together something that costs, you know, 35, 40 billion dollars. If we think about the grade separation project that we have, if it is, you know, $200 to $300 million, and we need to pay a 10% local match, that's kind of on the same order of magnitude as this creek project. And because, I don't think we will get external funding because we don't get external transportation value from a tunnel, think about the difference between 30 or 40 billion dollars, 300 billion dollars, million dollars, billion dollars. We are talking about a very big difference between the kinds of things that we have to work to pay for, and then something several tiers higher than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more public comment cards, Ms. Herron? All right. So we're going to go ahead now, move to our consent calendar. Are there any comment cards on the consent calendar? Yes, all right. Let's go ahead and...
My apologies, F2, which has been polled, so no.
F2's been polled, all right. So if you were here on F2, that item isn't being heard tonight. Does anyone have, would anyone like to poll any items from the consent calendar? From F1 or F3? Can I have a motion to approve F1 or F3?
I have questions on F1.
All right.
Do you want me to poll it, or?
There's only two items. You can just go ahead and ask your questions. Do we have a staff member here to answer questions on F1? Thank you, Ms. Nagaya.
I have a couple of questions, and these are maintenance. I wanted to know if there was a list, a standing list of how many property owners with trees actually need repairs?
Yes, Assistant Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya. So the, the maintenance team does maintain a list of all the requests that we get for sidewalk repairs. And we also have a, an inventory of all the locations with properties that have street trees associated with the assessments as part of this item. So is either one of those the data that you'd be looking for?
The data specific are the, the properties that have trees that are damaging the sidewalks to a point where they need to be repaired.
So the, the list that we keep is as complete as the complaints and the issues that are brought to us. So we, I don't know that we have a full list of every issue in the city today, but we have more locations than we can handle in any given fiscal year that are currently on the list.
And so are the, I see that there's properties with trees and properties without trees, and that there's a different price per parcel?
Correct.
So how do you determine? Do you do, how do you determine who has a tree and who doesn't, based on what their, what the cost is?
So the, the assessment is, is not based on the, the existence of damage in the current condition, but just the presence or lack of presence of a tree. So we do have a complete inventory of all the tree locations in the city that's then incorporated into the, the assessment for each parcel.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding either of the two items? Okay, can I have a motion to approve item F1 and F3? Councilmember Carlton's moved. Can I have a second? Councilmember Nash, a second, and let's go ahead and vote. Thank you. All right. So we're going to go ahead and move on now to item G1. Consider the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve resolution number 6501 to amend and restate conditional development permit for the Sharon Hills Development, 145 Biltmore Lane, 1,115 to 1,135 Continental Drive, 255 Hallmark Circle, 115 Oliver Circle, 226 Susan Gale Court, 2300 Toyota Drive, 1,200 to 1,371 Trinity Drive. Our Principal Planner, Thomas Rogers, will make the presentation. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. One correction to start, the address of Oliver Circle does not exist, is my mistake. It's actually Oliver Court. So if the council moves forward the agenda item tonight, that typo will be corrected in all the documents. So I'm here representing the Sharon Hills CDP Amendment, and one question you might have right off the bat is, what is a CDP? Planners love our acronyms. It stands for Conditional Development Permit, and it's a process that allows the base zoning standards to be adjusted in order to secure special benefits to the city, to prevent relief from the monotony of standard development, and to permit the application of new and desirable development techniques, and to encourage more usable open space. So the subject CDP was approved in 1982. It's a large site at the end of Valparaiso Avenue in Sharon Heights, 38 acres. And the CDP approval back then allowed the implementation of 77 townhouse units, three single-family parcels, as well as the large Sharon Hills Park. That is now a fully public park. So the CDP has a provision that requires Planning Commission approval of the detailed project plans. When the project was originally approved, that was done comprehensively, approved the layout and design of all the buildings in early, in mid 1980s. You see some pictures here of the construction, which shows how much things have changed over the years, but also shows how I will not resist any opportunity to pull in archived photos from our planning archives. The Sharon Hills Community Association is the HOA that oversees the townhomes. It does not have any role over the three single-family parcels or Sharon Hills Park, which has been turned over to the city. So the CDP provision for Planning Commission approval of development plans worked well for the original implementation of the project, but as times change, preferences change, the buildings get a little older, things need to be replaced. Owners have come in and proposed what we would call relatively small-scale modifications, like you see at the bottom. On the left, a door, front door changing from more of a, honestly, 1980s style to more contemporary style. In the middle, a kitchen window got larger, but in keeping with overall style. On the right-hand side, an alcove was filled in, and the railing type was changed, but not a major approval overall. So currently, all of these require Planning Commission review because of that CDP provision. We did a survey of the most recent seven such cases. All of them were on what's called the consent calendar. Nobody from the Planning Commission pulled them. No one from the public wanted to speak about them. All of them were approved unanimously. So the HOA, the Sharon Hills Community Association, came to us and asked, what can we do to make this a little more streamlined for these owners, given that there's limited interest? And so they've proposed a CDP amendment to effectuate that. So it would remove the Planning Commission review requirement for these relatively modest modifications. The detailed review by the HOA itself would still remain required before an applicant could move on to a building permit. The SHCA has an Architectural Control Committee. Anything that gets through the Architectural Control Committee, and not everything does, still needs to be approved by the Board. So it's a pretty robust review process. We've defined only certain types of changes that would be eligible for this streamlined review. In particular, it's only changes that would occur within the individual townhouse lot lines or the recreational facility use areas, as the CDP describes in more detail. We ran the draft CDP through the city attorney in detail, as well as working with the applicant. It restates all of the key development standards so that it's clear that the density and overall layout is not changing. It's really just providing a new review process for these types of projects. And one particular note, the three single-family parcels would remain unaffected. They're, strictly speaking, part of the CDP, but they function like all other single-family properties in this area. So to date, all the public comment has been supportive. The Planning Commission reviewed the request on April 8th, unanimously recommended approval. One of the Planning Commissioners said he approached it first as sounding a little bit like a breakup, but then upon reconsideration, he thought it was more like sending a child off to college now that they're old enough and can, can sort of do, function on their own, which I thought was a clever way of approaching it. And so we are recommending approval of this amendment. And again, just to reiterate, the Sharon Hills Community Association review and action requirement would still be in effect, would still be detailed and substantive. This would likely result in cost and time savings for the applicant, and it would also improve our efficiency as staff to not have to write staff reports and attend meetings and provide subjective design review for these types of proposals. And the Planning Commission review would still remain, but it would be focused on more substantive proposals, in particular, those that stray past the townhouse lot lines. So that concludes our staff presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take any.
Anyone have any? Councilmember Carlton?
I asked around the neighborhood, and everybody's in agreement, and well done. This is a really good example of what I've talked about before with streamlining processes and doing so intelligently. And so I moved to accept the staff recommendation. With, with the, with the change of the...
Councilmember Carlton, we still have a public hearing where the appellant has to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so any questions about the presentation from staff before we take on the appellant? Okay, I mean, sorry, is it the appellate, the applicant? All right. So let's go ahead now, and we have a 10-minute allotment for the applicant presentation.
My name is Fred Smith, and I've been a resident of Menlo Park for 49 years, and a resident of the Sharon Hills Community Association for the past five years, four of which I served on the Board, two as President. The current conditional development process, permit, or CDP, was granted to our builder in 1982. The CDP requires, among other things, that any architectural change to the exterior of our townhouses must be approved by the Menlo Park Planning Commission before the building permit can be issued. Today, there are 77 townhouses in our association, 35 years old. As you might expect, our association is at a place where homeowners are wanting to update their townhouses to bring them into the 21st century. Sharon Hills Community Association is here tonight to ask you to support and approve this amendment to our original 37-year-old CDP, as have both the Menlo Park Planning Department and Menlo Park Planning Commission at their meeting on April the 8th. For us, the key element of this amendment is to allow exterior modifications to our Sharon Hills townhouse that lie within the lot line, to move forward solely with the approval of the Sharon Hills Community Association Board, and then proceed directly to the Menlo Park planning, building permit process without the need for the Planning Commission oversight, thus eliminating an expensive and time-consuming process to the homeowner. On the other hand, any exterior change to a Sharon Hill townhouse that falls outside the lot line will still require the approval process as mandated by the Menlo Park Planning Briefly, I'll explain why the Sharon Hills Community Association believes that we're ready for this change. In 1986, Sharon Hill Community Association was required by the state of California to adopt the state-mandated CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Article 7 of our CCNRs requires Sharon Hills Community Association to establish an Architectural Control Committee, or ACC. And it also details how the ACC should operate. Our ACC has now been in place for 33 years. Some of the details, our ACC is composed of five homeowners and one board member. We have a application process that is a six-page application process that, among other things, requires the homeowner to explain what the modifications are, whether or not the construction is moving outside the lot line, requests a PDF file of the architectural drawings. Included also is a neighbor awareness form whereby neighbors sign that they are okay with any proposed project, and the Menlo Park and Sharon Hills Community Association construction rules that a contractor must follow. The ACC then meets, reviews the proposal, visits a site in person, and evaluates the proposal and its impact on the Sharon Hills Community Association and its near neighbors. The ACC then presents its findings and recommendations to the Sharon Hills Community Association Board. The Board makes the final decision. Finally, the official Board approval or rejection letter is sent to the homeowners by the association managing company, Bay Area Property Services. If approved, the ACC then monitors the construction to ensure that the changes are exactly as proposed and in the approved application. Sharon Hills Community Association believes that our thorough process in which both the ACC and Board of Directors independently review every proposal for any kind of exterior modification is sufficient and adequate in order to maintain and develop a consistent look that upholds the strong desire to live in our community and maintain the high value of our townhouses. As a result, the Sharon Hills Community Association Board and homeowners strongly urge you to support this important amendment, as has the Menlo Park Planning Department, the Menlo Park Planning Commission, by voting your approval to this 2019 amendment to our CDP tonight. I'd like for all of the Sharon Hills homeowners that are present to stand. Thank you. Finally, I would personally like to thank Catherine Lowe, who is unable to be with us tonight, our ACC Chairman, and has worked tirelessly with the Menlo Park Planning Department on drafting this proposed change to our CDP. on drafting this proposed change to our CDP. Thomas Rogers of the Menlo Park Planning Department, and Bill McClure, Menlo Park City Attorney, for their encouragement and support in helping us navigate our way through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and no public comment cards? One public comment card? Let me pull it up. Catherine Glassy.
So, I'm Catherine Glassy, and I lived in Palo Alto for 30 years and just moved into Sharon Hills three years ago, so I'm now, I crossed the creek or the Rubicon to join this HOA community. And of course, being a former Palo Alto, and I assume the first thing you do when you have a new house is you remodel it. And so I embarked upon this process and quite innocently went through the process, came up with the design, and submitted it to the ACC where it was promptly rejected. And I'm telling you this story because it was a surprise to me that anyone would have a say over what I wanted to do that wasn't the city council. I've been in Palo Alto, I've done this thing. But they ran an incredibly professional and tight and thoughtful and responsible process, and explained what I'd done wrong, explained how it went, and actually, through the process, I revised the plan and came up with an even better plan that fits all of the community guidelines that my neighbors are happy with, I'm happy with, and cross your fingers, in two months, it'll be done. So my point is, this isn't a kind of a fly-by-night casual operation. They take their responsibilities incredibly seriously. It's very professionally run, and even though I'm actually a member of the board, I got no special dispensation whatsoever. So I think you can feel very confident that they are going to be good stewards of the land up there, and I hope that you'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so back up here for, are there any other questions? No. So I just wanted to note myself as well, so first of all, sir, excellent presentation. I want to commend the Sharon Hills Community Association Board and your members for your collaboration with our city staff, professional staff on this. I also wanted to note that I actually did myself do some extensive outreach to the community over the last few weeks, which I'm sure you guys are aware of, and there's no, absolutely no pushback at all. So with that, if someone wants to go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6501 with the amendment to change Oliver Circle to Oliver Court, Councilmember Carlton--
Sorry, I didn't mean to get ahead of ourselves earlier.
Okay, Councilmember Carlton makes the motion. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I'll second it, and if I can just make one very brief comment and get on my soapbox, yes, I can be obviously very supportive of this, and I do think that this should be a motto, and we should be looking for more opportunities in the planning review process to move it from the Planning Commission use permit process to administrative review. So I think that's a great example for other sort of efficiencies that we can achieve in the city. I second that.
Excellent.
I agree with Councilmember Combs. Thank you all for being so professional and for working with our staff so well.
All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item. Our next item this evening, we are not going to be hearing Item H1, so we're going to go ahead now and move on to Item H2. If I read that correctly, the Complete Streets Commission update and approval of the Complete Streets Commission work plan in Middle Avenue and Olive Street Bike Improvements Project. And this evening, we have Associate Transportation Engineer Kevin Chen and Complete Streets Commissioner Bill Kirsch will be going ahead and speaking to the item. I think we'll start with, who do we start with? Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Mueller, and member of the council and member of the public. My name is Kevin Chen, Associate Transportation Engineer, and also the staff liaison for our Complete Streets Commission. I am accompanied tonight by Commissioner Bill Kirsch, one of our nine Complete Street Commissioners, who also happened to be just stepped down from the chair role, so definitely spent a lot of time and dedication for the city, so definitely appreciate that. So tonight, we are here to present two specific items and seeking your approval tonight. One is the Complete Street Commission work plan, and as many of you know, a work plan really, it lays the foundation for our city, for our Complete Street Commission, to really work comprehensively and then along the line of supporting the city council work plan as well. So really, the approval of the work plan would really help us guide the process to continue forward. The second item is the Middle Avenue and Olive Street Bicycle Improvement Project on a Page. Many of you have heard a presentation that was actually given by our chair, or former chair, late last year, and the direction that was given by the city council was to direct the Complete Street Commission to develop a high-level project on a page, which typically summarizes the proposal's scope, some of the key milestones, and also the required resources necessary to complete it as a project. So with that in mind, we do want to make sure that the city council is aware with the approval tonight, what we are essentially seeking for is a request to evaluate the proposal, no earlier than the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. What that means is that as the future budget and resources allows, staff would be returning to the city council with a more comprehensive plan, a more detailed scope, as well as a request for resources, as is currently outlined in the Middle Avenue POP. So with that, I would like to turn over to the chair who will be talking about the Complete Street Commission and as well as the Middle Avenue POP.
Kevin, thank you. Mayor Mueller, city council members, thank you for inviting us here tonight. First, I always like to thank you all for your service to the community. You have the toughest job in the city, and I admire and appreciate your willingness to step up and take on this job. You probably don't get enough kudos, but you should. And, you know, even if I disagree with some of your decisions, that doesn't matter. I still respect, it doesn't diminish my respect for what you do, so I throw that out there. So my commission, my Complete Streets Commission, wanted me to first tell you what the Complete Streets Commission is about and what we do. By the way, I'm the outgoing chair, and I've been replaced in the next meeting for a year by Katie Beruzzi. She will be the new chair, and Adina Levin will be the vice chair. They're both, as you know, extremely capable and passionate leaders. And also, you've elected three really good new folks for the commission that have joined in the last few months, so thank you for doing that. We're a group of nine members. It's a very large commission. Can you imagine nine city council people? It's a bit challenging to manage, mainly because they're all very smart, articulate people that want to make positive change. Also want to just make a shout out to Kevin Chen. Kevin has done an extremely good job, really a great job, in sort of guiding our commission, keeping us up to date on all the things that city council's doing that are related to transportation, so you should know that. Kevin's fantastic. So I'll summarize to you all what the goals of our Complete Streets Commission is, what our charter is, our mission. It's to advise the city council on realizing its goals of complete streets, Vision Zero, clean air, and carbon reduction. And as you know, Vision Zero is the goal of eliminating deaths and serious injuries on our roadways. In my opinion, the city goal is too far out in the future, and we have not established any intermediate goals to reach that goal of Vision Zero, and I'd like to see the city establish intermediate, solid goals to get to that vision of complete, of Vision Zero, no deaths, no serious injuries on our roadways. We can get there. What are complete streets? The complete streets are designed to enable safe access for all users, bear with me, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, transit riders of all ages and abilities. I should also add to the term bicycles, this new emerging category of e-bikes and electric scooters, electric bicycles. If you've never ridden one, an electric bike, they're fantastic. I rode one in Denver. They're really fun, they're no sweat, you can get places, a lot of them have big cargo, they can replace an automobile for many trips for many people. Let's see. Complete streets make it easy to cross streets, to walk to shops, bicycle school and work, to run errands of all kinds, so that cars have more room and streets are safer for all users. Creating complete streets means we must change our approach to community roads. By adopting complete streets policy, we direct our transportation planners and consultants to routinely design the entire right-of-way of a street to enable safe access for all users, regardless of age, ability, or mode of transportation. This means that every transportation project will and should make the street network better and safer for automobile drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists. This will make our town a more thriving, better connected, and healthier place to live. I think we all know that intuitively. Our commission will soon be inviting each of you on a walking and bicycling tour of our fair city this summer, date to be determined, to assess challenges to our complete streets vision and discuss possible solutions. So stay tuned for that. We'll have a date set, and we'll happily invite all of you. Thank you for considering that. Okay, now I'll move over to the table here, and I'm going to present the Middle Avenue, Olive Street Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements Project. We call that Project on a Page, or POP. So I'll go over here. First off, just the railroad undercrossing, the Caltrain's undercrossing, I think that's the most exciting project that I've seen come before the city in the 35 years that I've lived in this community. I think it can be transformative for moving people around Menlo Park and for reaching our congestion relief goals, carbon-neutral goals, et cetera. I think it's a fantastic project, and I'm glad to see the city putting it on a fast This POP, this Project on a Page, it was conceived by our commission in response to the urgency of delivering a Caltrain pedestrian bicycle undercrossing to meet Stanford's development timeline on 500 El Camino Real. And to ensure the maximum utilization and benefit to the community, and to make the undercrossing a real game changer for congestion relief, we, the Complete Streets Commission, crafted a set of nine goals for the Middle Avenue corridor, and specific design features that could address these goals as a way to help ignite community engagement, to start a robust conversation, and to focus resources. So this is just the beginning, and these are just our ideas, and we know they're going to go through the very robust filtering and planning, community engagement. But we wanted to put something on paper to get it started, just as we did with the Oak Grove University corridor. We started in the same way. Again, these specific design features are just our ideas, and we are very pleased to see the city entertain a community-wide discussion and enter into a study and planning phase to bring this project to reality. However, the final shape, however the final shape and specific details evolve. A chain is only as strong as its weakest link. Let's deliver a great project for our city. We can collectively make a huge difference now and for future generations if we get this undercrossing and access on both sides to this undercrossing really good for pedestrians and bicyclists. That's what we want to attract through this corridor and get them through the undercrossing to amenities on both sides. The, I just want to applaud the city council on the Oak Grove project. I think that's been an overwhelming success, and for the Santa Cruz Avenue sidewalks and bike lanes, I think that's been a fabulous project as well. They're both daring projects, they had a lot of critics, but they have been hugely successful. I honor our city council for their foresight and determination in bringing those projects to life. I'd like to see you do the same for this project. Let's walk the talk, let's walk the talk. Complete streets, Vision Zero, carbon reduction. Let's get there. As an example of the possible congestion relief the undercrossing in the Middle Avenue corridor could deliver, consider the Burgess Pool Facility. The Burgess Pool complex has over 1,000 guests every day in the summer months. Can you imagine that? Most drive, because walking or bicycling, at the very best, is uncomfortable, at worst, it's dangerous. Add to that soccer, baseball, the library, the Ariaga Recreation Center, those numbers. Imagine if we had a truly safe and attractive Middle Avenue corridor that served all modes of travel, offered a protected crossing at El Camino Real, and a fantastic Caltrain undercrossing and connection to the Burgess Rec facilities. Imagine that. This is congestion relief. How many adults and children might opt for a walk, or a bike ride, or an e-bike ride, or a scooter ride, instead of having a parent shuttle them through congested roads to an overburdened parking lot? Okay, slide one we have here. That one, okay, thank you, Kevin. Slide one. This slide shows how important a complete street, Middle Avenue, can be to connections to schools. You see in yellow, Oak Knoll and Hillview, to the senior center in Neelot Park, to the University Avenue, Oak Grove Bike Boulevard, to our downtown, to Santa Cruz Avenue on Points West, to Stanford and the mall, all via the bike bridge. Without getting too much into specifics, the major complaint our commission heard from residents on the middle repaving project that was before us several months ago, the main concern we heard was speeding traffic on Middle Avenue. So I just want to point out, you see in the black on the Middle Avenue, that's the main green stripe going up and down, you see kind of three black stripes. Those represent raised crosswalks as a possible solution to speeding traffic, and at the same time, to make these crossings truly safe for humans. Many other solutions are available, but speed on Middle is obviously a big problem, as it is on Santa Cruz Avenue, as it is on El Camino Real, on Middlefield, and speeding is a major problem on every major corridor in Menlo Park. If you don't think it is, drive the speed limit and watch as people tailgate you. To me, a speeding car is a potential lethal weapon, and it's an assault on our quality of life, and we should do something about it. I want to go to the third slide, Kevin's, yeah, right there. Okay. Slide three, we need to get bicyclists safely over to the north side of Middle to cross ECR. This is the, on the, kind of the middle-left side is the Safeway parking lot, and as you go up the page, you're approaching El Camino, we have to move cyclists to the left side, because that's the, that'll be the crossing and the entry in the Middle Plaza and access to the pedestrian bike undercrossing. Our proposal has ideas on how to make this crossing safe, but other ideas from the public city staff and consultants may prove better. This is just a way to spark a discussion and get the ball rolling. Let's go to the fourth slide, Kevin. Thank you. Okay, this is the east side of Burgess. You see Burgess in green towards the bottom, and then as you go up the screen, that's, you're moving over to Vintage Oaks, to Willows, et cetera, to the east side. This is an expanded vision for how the undercrossing can provide major congestion relief if we deliver safe, viable bicycle access for the east-- deliver safe, viable bicycle access for the east side of Burgess and those communities over there to the undercrossing and get them to a bona fide Complete Street, Middle Avenue. And you see the little numbers at the top, nine minutes, and you see six minutes. This is what Google Maps says it would take by bicycle from those points over to, under the, to the undercrossing to Safeway. Six minutes from Willows and nine minutes from the very north, most eastern part of Willows. Six minutes and nine minutes. That's faster than driving a car. But this access will require a protected crossing at Linfield at the Firehouse. I think we all know about that. And good bicycling corridors along the entire route. Our Willow's neighbors, one Willow's neighbor tells me that he and his family routinely go downtown Palo Alto because getting to downtown Menlo Park is too sketchy by bike and too congested by car. Congestion relief means giving folks an attractive alternative to driving so that everyone has more room. Drivers have more room, bicyclists have safe access. The street will be safer for every user. Traffic collisions are down at the El Camino Real, Oak Grove intersection since the city installed the Oak Grove Bike Boulevard. Bike lanes make streets safer. I'll turn now to slides on the Project on a Page. So this is the Project on a Page. And the Complete Streets Commission, we develop nine sort of general goals for the Middle Avenue corridor. I'll read them quickly to you. Improve access to Safeway Plaza for cyclists and pedestrians. Improve bicycle pedestrian crossings to Nealon Park at Blake. That's the crossing right there into the park. It's very dangerous. And the Roble entrance from the other side of the park, closer to downtown, where you go through that long alley. Improved bicycle pedestrian crossing, I'm sorry, improved bicycle pedestrian crossing to the San Mateo Bicycle Bridge at San Mateo Drive. Improved bicycle pedestrian crossing to Lyle Park at Arbor Road. Continuous standard buffered or protected bike lanes along the entire length of Middle Avenue with at least one side of street parking to be removed. That creates room for buffered bike lanes on both sides. It's not ideal leaving parking on one side, but it's much, much safer than what we have now, which is not safe. Parking safety improvements along Nealon Park frontage and possible removing of such. That's supported by the Menlo Atherton Co-op and by the Parks and Rec Commission, both of which we presented to. Continuous bike lanes along Olive Street. That's the street, as you know, that goes north to connect to Santa Cruz Avenue and cross to Hillview School. So continuous bike lanes along Olive Street to Santa Cruz Avenue, Hillview Middle School with potential parking restriction or removal. Improved El Camino Real crossing to the Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real. And sidewalk improvements along the south side of Middle Avenue. I think we can just go to that, the two schematics. There we go. So, not to get in the weeds with these specific concepts, but what we did was, this is our Complete Streets Commission ideas for each section of Middle Avenue. Each segment presents unique challenges addressed by the CSC with these specific recommendations. Again, these are just discussion items. These ideas are meant to be malleable and the experts will undoubtedly have better suggestions. But these were our ideas to spark a discussion, to focus resources. Last slide. Okay, thank you. This shows access to downtown via Crane Street and to Big Five. There were the, you see that arrow, the white arrow, the yellow box, kind of the upper, the one that's upper right. You see access to Safeway Complex to Nealon Park, the Menlo Atherton Nursery School Co-op. The orange lines represent off-street paths. So let me make just one final comment. Thank you for bearing with me. Just today, I rode my bike down Santa Cruz Avenue and I stopped at Hillview School and I counted 200 bikes on, that reside next to Santa Cruz Avenue. 200 bicycles on a rainy day. If you lined up 200 cars, if 200 bikes replaced 200 cars, or let's say it replaces 150 car trips, if you line up 150 cars, 15 feet long average car, maybe you have one car-length space in between each, that's almost a mile long of car traffic. One mile. That's from Hillview all the way down to El Camino Real. That's what those bicyclists replace in car traffic. That is congestion relief. And imagine if you multiply that times all the schools that we have in our community. So thank you for bearing with me and our Complete Streets Commission is really excited to kick off this Project on a Page.
Okay, so now we're going to bring it up to questions. Anyone have any questions before we open to public comment? I do have a question. Mr. Chen, in the Attachment B, Middle Avenue and Olive Street Bicycle Improvements, we've heard repeatedly tonight that the designs that, for the preferred alternative design are just to kick off a discussion, but at key project activities and timeline, Point 1, it says Complete Streets Commission to evaluate and recommend preferred alternative design to Middle Ave, San Mateo Ave, and it lists Spring 2019. It has me concerned because we're almost in Summer 2019. So did that already occur?
I can, yeah, I can answer. Go ahead. Well, yes, it did occur.
All right. Well, that's not just kicking off a discussion. You've already picked a preferred alternative on the POP.
No, sir. That was just a discussion. And we were, we were, our job at that Complete Streets Commission was to recommend a preferred alternative. Mayor Mueller, please respect me and allow me to finish talking.
Actually, you interrupted me, Bill.
Okay, go ahead.
What I don't understand about this is how is it, could it be that in here we have three timelines and the preferred alternative design for discussion, which would be analyzed under this POP, has already been selected?
Maybe I can just take over for this one real quick. So as Commissioner Kirsch mentioned, the specific element in this case, we are only targeting for Middle Avenue between Olive and San Mateo. And the reason why we were able to brought this forward was because it was part of the, our annual or resurfacing project for that particular stretch of the roadway. So with that consideration in mind, and also as Middle Avenue being identified either as a bike route or bike lane, in our multiple documents, city approved, adopted documents, we were able to bring that item forward first to this Complete Street Commission and then subsequently we'll come back to the City Council for a final recommendation in terms of the bike lane project. But that is only specifically for Middle Avenue between Olive and San Mateo.
Okay, I understand that. So that means for, if I'm looking at this POP for Point 1, the preferred alternative design has already been selected. Is that correct?
That is the Complete Street Commission's recommendation. The ultimate design is still for the City Council to decide.
Okay, with that, we can go ahead and start public comment. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Nash.
So some clarification. My understanding is that this actually was a recommendation that the City Council requested of the Complete Streets Commission to come up with sort of a placeholder. And that in fact, there's going to be, the city staff went, as they have time, which I believe isn't until next year, will be coming forward and actually doing engineering, either staff itself or the engineering consulting firm, will be actually coming up with the actual suggested alternative. Can you please give me a timeline as to when all of this will occur and what the process will be, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So tentatively, what we have planned is to come before the City Council with a more detailed scope of work, which would involve the study of the alternatives as well as design. But tentatively, what we have planned schedule is for the planning phase, which would involve a transportation study typically in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And then we will follow that with a design. It would be typically a constructible design set, if you will, in the year 2021. And then with, hopefully with everything going accordingly, we'll be able to go into construction by the year 2022, which hopefully we will be able to align with the construction of the Middle Avenue undercrossing as well as the 500 El Camino Real development.
Can you, perhaps Nikki, since, or you've got your name on the document, can you please explain to us how, there's been a lot of concern about the design. And can you explain where we are?
Sure. So I think there are kind of two items happening. So first is, in the Capital Improvement Program, the city had been planning for repaving of Middle Avenue between Olive Street and San Mateo Drive. And so you saw an info item outlining that approach in February. Really concurrent with that process, the council had directed the Complete Streets Commission as part of the work plan development for the year, or a number of items referred to commissions. And so this was one for Middle and San Mateo. So you may remember commissioners came to the goal-setting meeting requesting that this become a project. And instead of directing it to staff for evaluation at this point, based on the resources, resource constraints that we had, we directed it back to the commission to prepare this document. So I think the confusion is definitely because these two parallel efforts are happening at the same time. And so we do have the repaving project that's been vetted by the Complete Streets Commission, but we'll come back to council for San Mateo to Olive. We're currently tracking in July because there were definitely concerns about parking removal. We had multiple options for removing parking on one or both sides that the Complete Streets Commission considered. Then the Project on a Page outlines the commission's vision for the rest of Middle Avenue. And so what Kevin put up on the screen is a summary of what we're tracking in terms of schedule for any sort of planning evaluation, staff's review of the other sections. There are a number of different grants and things that we're tracking along the corridor. And so we're trying to summarize what we would envision as next steps for the other sections. But we don't have resources to pick up those other sections in the immediate future. So that's why there's a lag on the other two sections between San Mateo University and then University de El Camino.
Can I ask, how many public outreach meetings have there been on this topic?
So on the Middle Avenue project between Olive and San Mateo, the Complete Streets Commission hearing was the first outreach event.
And that was the one where the preferred alternative design was selected?
For that section, correct.
So there were no, there were no public outreach meetings prior to that meeting?
So two things. One is that the commission made a recommendation that will then come before the council. So they had certainly a preference for an alternative, but ultimately the council will get to make the decision for which alternative gets constructed, or if any alternative gets constructed. We could just replace what's there today. The other piece is part of the commission, the outreach prior to the commission for that section, we had letters mailed to every homeowner on Middle. We had a postcard sent to properties within 500 feet of Middle. And then we had staff walk the corridor and knock on doors to make sure that everybody knew what was being proposed in advance of that meeting. So we did everything we could to get the word out. And we did have about 10 or 15 property owners, homeowners, residents that came to the Complete Streets Commission to express their preferences for that section.
And you're talking about strictly from San Mateo to Olive?
Excuse me, Councilmember Nash. I'm still speaking. Was there, can you please, what I want to know is, was there any, I understand that there was, over what time period was the outreach done? Was it the week before? Was it a month? How much time was provided? Because I'll tell you, my experience in talking to homeowners, it just showed up before they could even get together and talk amongst themselves as community members. So how much time was actually given them to get to that meeting?
So we can definitely pull the specific dates. The commission meeting was in early April, I believe the 10th of April. And the letters and notices were mailed about three weeks in advance of the meeting. And then we walked the corridor the week prior when we hadn't heard a lot from residents. We wanted to make sure that those mailers were actually resonating with folks prior to the commission meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Nash, did you have a question?
Can I just confirm that we are right now talking about from San Mateo Drive to Olive? We are not talking about from San Mateo Drive to El Camino?
It's part of the repaving work that's scheduled for 2020, correct.
Correct.
The outreach is targeted for just that section where the city has the resources to do that project right now.
Okay, Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks, Bill, for the presentation. I appreciate it. And it looks like you guys put a lot of work in it. And I appreciate the Complete Streets Commission coming forward with what their vision is for Middle. It certainly is what we've asked, even if we may sort of disagree or have some concerns about it. My question is that sort of in the staff report, the recommendation is staff recommends that the City Council approve the, and the second bullet is Middle Avenue and Olive Bicycle Improvement Project on a Page, Attachment B. So if we follow that, that recommendation from staff, I'm still a little confused about what exactly we're doing. What exactly we're approving, since it seems as though on one end, it's like this is a design, this is one concept that's being thrown out. But on the other end, it's saying very much, you know, the recommendation of city staff is to approve, is improve the project as it is, is kind of outlined and described in Attachment B.
So I think the specific action is outlined in the, kind of next steps in the Project on a Page. And so what we were envisioning the next steps to be is that near-term paving project that they were describing from San Mateo to Olive. So there's anticipated action to come before the council for that. The commission then also wanted to outline support for the Middle Avenue Caltrain crossing. So that's Item 2. And then the third item is the council to identify resources for evaluation, design, implementation of the other section. So that's what we were envisioning the process to be. I understand that the concerns about the specifics and the proposal is presented in the graphics. And so one option could also be the nine overarching principles on the Project on a Page itself. If those are items that there's general agreement with, maybe the approval is just for the single page and not the graphics. And so that could send a different message of finding the goals and the vision to be in line with the council's expectations while stepping back from the specific proposals as part of the graphics that were attached. But I think the commission wanted to present the graphics as to illustrate the concepts of what they were, what the thought was in the prior commission meetings and discussions going forward.
So to be clear, I don't, my issue right now isn't the designs. My issue right now is the process. So I think this process candidly is deficient. I don't think the residents have involved nearly enough to get this accomplished. And I think we've come out on the wrong foot on this from the start. Because now we're playing catch-up with residents who basically learned about this two weeks before it happened, had designs put in front of them, and were never asked what they thought about it. And my understanding in walking, I've walked that area, those residents do care about multimodal transit. They do care about dropping the speeds. They do care about trying to make it safer. But they want to have a voice in the process. And they don't feel like they do right now. They feel like the cart, the horse left the barn before they even got a chance to talk about it. And that's not where we want to be in order to get this accomplished. And I've worked on other projects in the city. Sometimes I've screwed up and had to go back and fix it. There's part of the city right now where I'm doing a lot of community engagement to do that. And there's others where I got, where we got in front of it to begin with. But we are really far behind it right now with residents who live on that street. Because it just, even tonight, so what happened was there was the Complete Streets Because it just, even tonight, so what happened was, there was the Complete Streets Commission meeting, and I got contacted by those residents. They said, we want to talk. And honestly, we tried to set up, I have a meeting in someone's house. And the soonest that we could find a time to get all of those residents together is next week. And before that even, we even could have that meeting, this was on. And so now I had to go play catch-up and say, you know what, seriously, all your input matters. And I'm like, I can't explain why we're already approving the POP with the preferred design. You haven't even had a chance to talk to me yet since the Transportation Commission meeting, the Complete Streets Commission meeting. So that's my concerning, sitting up here tonight. I don't, I haven't had a chance to talk with residents about this design yet, I think, or even work through this with them. And I know that this didn't happen, that that didn't happen at the Complete Streets Commission. They got told this design was coming, and they were told to come give their public comment. And that was their two, or three minutes that night to say something about it, to participate. Councilmember Carlton?
All right. So you and I haven't discussed this before, for the record, but I agree with you 100%. This isn't the process. This is not how we do things. And if the process is broken, then we need to take a step back and look at the process. But we have processes, and we need to follow them to make sure that we do correct outreach. Also, I met with Ms. Nagaya this morning and found out that this design isn't approved by the engineers. We spend a lot of money, well, fair amount of money, hiring extremely competent people. We have people on staff from Princeton. We have very well-educated, intelligent people who I respect, and that's why they're there, is, yeah, we need people like, Bill, I love you. You guys are great. And I deeply want you to know how much I appreciate you. And Adina knows, I've called her so many times to get her feedback on things. You're deeply respected, and we really appreciate, this is so thoughtful. Oh, my God, when I saw this, I was really impressed. But I need to know that it's gone through the engineers. We went through, going through, putting in the bike lanes and the sidewalks on Santa Cruz. I remember being silly enough, my January being mayor, thinking, yes, we're going to do sidewalks on Santa Cruz. I think we cut the ribbon two years later. It was that complicated in terms of dealing with the slope of the street and all this. We've learned the devils and the details, and we need the engineers to advise us on this. And the thing that concerned me is when I looked at this, the project on the page irritates me because it makes it seem trivial. And this is not trivial. This is millions of dollars and impacting people's lives, and it has to be done really thoughtfully. And no place on the key project activities and timeline do I see staff review and staff leading this process. Maybe this gets back to where we do need to take a step back, kind of to Ms. Bramlett's point, and really better define the roles that we need people to advise, but not necessarily lead the process, because we have staff to do that. And I don't want you to think that we don't deeply appreciate you, because we do. I need to make sure that the engineers have looked at this, and that the residents at least feel deeply heard and respected. As you know, I came out when we were doing Santa Cruz and met with you and stood in front of your house and looked at the gutters. You know, this is kind of part of the thing. And yeah, I want to make sure it's done in time. But I also want to make sure that we follow the process correctly to make sure we do it right. Because nobody wants to make the mistakes and have to go dig ourselves out of it. And they always say, what is it? My grandfather used to say, measure twice, cut once. And so I don't want you to think that we're saying no, because that's not what we're saying. It's not what I'm saying. I can't speak for them. But I am saying, let's take a big step back and look at this, and make sure that we do it thoughtfully and intelligently. And I don't have a problem with the principles, but we have a process. We have a timeline that we follow. There's no need to reinvent that.
City Councilmember Carlton, and Mayor Mueller, I appreciate your comments. And I totally understand the need for, you know, really strong public engagement. It wasn't our intent at the Complete Streets Commission to develop a design that's going to be installed. That wasn't our intent at all. Maybe what we should have done, and what we did on Oak Grove, is we did come up with a concept, and then we did socialize it around town. Here, we didn't do that. We happen to have expertise in design tools on our commission, and so we took advantage of that and kind of looked at each segment and said, what, you know, how can we deal with this segment? As a way to guide, as a way to provide, kind of like a platform for the consulting team, for the city staff, and for the community to discuss and engage and debate what they really want. I've been involved in community activism for 25 years, and where we've been successful has been where we've presented a vision, and with some specificity. Maybe we did too much here, but we like to put something down on paper that the community can embrace and debate and then come up with a solution. It's kind of a way to focus the community. And I think maybe what we should have done as a commission is to do more outreach. And I apologize for not doing that. But our intent was not to specify the exact final design. That was not the intent at all.
Really, the process is the staff should manage that outreach. And that doesn't mean you shouldn't go out and speak to people, too. But as I said, there's kind of a process that we go through. It drove me crazy at first because I thought, God, you know, snails whizzing by make us dizzy. Why is this taking so long? But now I've learned that there's a reason. That, as I said, it's the measure twice, cut once, making sure that we go through these things.
So from my standpoint, no one needs to apologize for anything? All right? Like, you don't need to apologize for anything, Bill. Staff doesn't need to apologize. Like, we do these meetings so we can get it right. And so once you heard frustration in my voice earlier, frustration in my voice is not that people are doing something wrong. It's that, as a council member, I don't want to be put in a corner with you guys trying to say that we need community involvement. All right? Yeah, like that's, so you hear frustration in my voice. It's not, the frustration that you hear from me is not that I have a fresh, like, I just want to be able to correct it and get the community involved and have us all on the track together. So I'm not, no one needs to apologize for anything. Let's just not put each other in corners, and let's get out there and do the community and the community work.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know if the timeline is the right timeline or not, but we just think that, you know, we have this great opportunity to build this undercrossing. And then we want to get really good access to the undercrossing. And, you know, we're under a time constraint with the Stanford project. So that's why I think we wanted to put this together, you know, as quickly as we could to get a discussion started.
All right. So let's go ahead and take public comment. So our first public speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, and commissioners. And Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident on the Complete Streets Commission, and in this case, reporting on my experience on the Complete Streets Commission of this project. So first of all, I want to thank the council for affirming the priority of this, to have the potential to have a complete street that is accompanying the transformative Caltrain undercrossing project to help people be able to get across town. This is really exciting to be able to help people, especially children, but of all ages and abilities, to be able to get from, you know, Lynnfield Oaks and the Willows to the parks, Nealon Jacklisle to the schools, and from Alada Arts and Central Menlo through to the pool and the library and sports field and so on. So on this particular topic, I'm on some of the, you know, local lists and bicycle lists. And I heard people say, like, oh, my goodness, the city council is about to approve this specific design. And while I did miss the particular meeting where this was discussed, my understanding about what the Complete Streets recommendation was, was not that we were playing civil engineers on television, but that we were getting ideas that then our professional staff and professional consultants would do professional design and professional engineering and, you know, turn it into something. And we were using some of the graphical skills to be able to have a picture that people could look at and start to think about. And I think it's really unfortunate that those things that were conceptual ideas were misunderstood as council is about to approve this specific design, which wasn't my understanding of what the commission had even recommended. Secondly, is in terms of an outreach, would also really look forward to seeing the city's outreach to the community, to the dozens of people who live on the street, and also to the hundreds of people who travel to the schools, who travel to the pools, who travel to the parks, who travel to the playing fields, and who can comment on the safety benefits and the safety features in addition to the day-to-day convenience and disruption issues. So we want to see the full spectrum of feedback for residents and for potential users, and to be able to get that complete picture about the benefits and drawbacks of a potential complete street in that location. And with that, I would encourage the council to move this forward, but in a way that clearly communicates to the community that we're going to have professional engineering and robust outreach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levin. Our next speaker this evening is Steve Schmidt, former mayor Schmidt.
Thank you, mayor and council. The issue of the program or the goals, the nine goals, I kind of saw those initially after looking at the graphics and thinking, oh, my God, you know, this has already been designed, and this is being approved tonight. I think the program list of considerations or of goals is an essential part of this process. And I think it was unfortunate that the, these designs accompanied the goals. I think if the designs that were illustrated are part of this motion, they have the potential to prejudice a consultant or any other, or members of the community into thinking that this is what Menlo Park is going to do. So I would support something that Nikki said a few minutes ago about dropping the graphics from your motion. And I don't know if you have to re-agenitize this item to do it, or if you can clean it up from the dais. But I think the process would be much more rational if you just talked about and included in the motion the goals and considerations for a design, rather than giving the impression that the designs, however well-intentioned, are not part of the policy of the city on Middle Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Katie Beruzzi.
Hi, council. Yeah, this is really confusing. I'm just going to say that. And incredibly frustrating, too, actually, for a lot of people involved. So I want to echo a lot of what Adina has said and what Steve has said. I think it's a little bit regrettable that Complete Streets Commission doesn't necessarily always know where to play. Because on the one hand, we have a bike plan dating back to 2005, and nothing's happened from the bike plan dating back to 2005. And then we had, you know, little things happen here and there. And then there was this experience with the Oak Grove Bike Boulevard where Complete Streets kind of took the ball and ran with it a little bit, and managed to achieve a project in a shorter time span than typically would happen. And so I think there was this sense of like, you know, we need to keep trying to put things forward, right? Middle Avenue is not a complete street. I just want to put that out there. Middle Avenue does not have contiguous sidewalks. There's people walking in the street right now. There are people speeding down the street right now. It's not just a route to school on which we had the audacity to put a safe routes to school sign. It is not safe, not all the time. Sometimes it is. But it is also going to be a route between the Stanford Development, 500 El Camino Real, and the Stanford Medical School. It's also going to be a route, as mentioned before, to all of these different parks and places. And for that reason, yeah, I think we need to get out of the weeds. And we need to stop looking at whether it should be like a five-foot lane or seven-foot lane or whatever, you know, what we're going to do between Olive and Middle versus Olive and something else. We need to think about this holistically. We need to say, we're a complete street city. We're a Vision Zero city. We're a city with an audacious climate goal that Mayor Mueller just wrote about. And part of that climate goal was about reducing emissions. And one of the ways that we know how to do that is to create complete streets. So what I wanted, what I was hoping would come out of this whole project on a page thing was for you five people here to say, yes, we'll figure out the design. We'll have engineers that are going to come up with the best possible plan. But yes, let's make Middle a complete street. And that means we're optimizing for all of the modes of transportation, which is not currently done. And when it is a complete street, the stakeholders in this community will get to have a piece of that, and they'll get to have a say in that. And that means, I mean, when you guys are talking about grade separation or the middle undercrossing, you're not just sending out notices to the raccoons living in the forest across from Burgess Park. Because although certainly their habitat will immediately be affected by a middle undercrossing, you're also aware that people from the Willows to Sharon Park, to Sharon Heights, will have the opportunity to cross our town through that undercrossing. Middle is the route. There is a gestalt. When we get Middle, a complete street, and we create an undercrossing, the whole of those two things will be greater than the sum of the parts. Neither of those will be as effective without the other. So I'm asking you to please approve the concept of a complete street on Middle, and then, yes, leave the details to the engineers. And we will do the outreach. I'm sorry, I'm over time. But I want to say, we had not by any means thought the outreach was done. I have a spreadsheet with outreach plans for the next year that we haven't even gotten started on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our next speaker is Connie Conroy. Was it Curtis Conroy? Are you speaker this evening? No, Connie, sorry, Connie Conroy. Hi, Connie.
So this is my first time, so forgive my nervousness. But I am interested in the history of how the Complete Streets got created. It feels, I've attended Complete Streets meetings, and I know the majority of them are bicyclists. And it feels like it's an advocacy group, and there's activists that are on it, which then tells me that it's even more important to get residents involved to counter an advocacy with then being able to advocate for what they would like for their own streets. So I don't know if I'm right, but it feels very much like they are an advocacy group. And, I mean, things like, there was a statement that was made that all these people drive to Burgess, quote, "because it's not safe to walk or bike." And I'd like to see the surveys, the studies that are from all those thousands of people that go to Burgess that are doing it just because it's not safe to walk or to bike. There are people like me that have very bad knees, that I can't walk, I can't bike. So my only choice is to drive. And so I also want to have cars be included in the discussions. Parking is important on Middle and other places for vendors, for healthcare people that may come to deliver services to elderly people or whomever. And raised crosswalks sound like a good idea. How does that affect the zero emissions? You know, people have to put on brakes and that kind of stuff. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of be a counter and bring up the fact that I really do support the residents' input, and I was really happy to hear you all advocating for the residents' input to counterbalance what seems like an advocacy commission with an activist goal in mind. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy. Okay, so we're going to bring it back up to council. And so I just want to say, so I, at the outset, like, the issue here isn't whether or not to do something on the road. All right? And so looking at trying to make it a complete street is something I think everyone agrees. But when you look at this, there are six different designs, even within this one plan, that were brought together by the commission. And I think the big issue that I have with the POP is the first key project activity and timeline, and the fact that the preferred alternative is already chosen, before we even approved. we even, before we even approved, before we even approved the timeline, the preferred alternative is chosen, right? I mean, we didn't even, you didn't get any input for us on that before it was chosen.
So that, that particular section, we brought an informational item forward to the council to outline the approach of both Santa Cruz and Middle in February, outlining the scope of those projects. Kevin, can you pull up the graphic that summarizes the work on Middle? There's a number of, of different projects there. So we wanted to try to provide some context for the work that was planned by staff versus what the council would refer to the commission as part of the goal setting.
So, but what's confusing to me about it is, and then so I just, what I would say is, if we're going to leave this in here, I want to amend this. So I want to go ahead and get rid of spring 2019. I know you guys already have done that, but I want to, I actually want to finish. I'd like to amend that. And then what I'd like to do is have at least two public outreach meetings with the commission, where they, where you take input of residents as to what some of these designs are before a preferred alternative design is chosen. So you'd push this back to fall 2019 to choose the preferred alternative design, but you'd have actually residents, like, with enough time so that they can meet, talk amongst themselves, they can look at this, and they can talk about what they, I mean, you make it to a point, because it's, the other thing that I noticed is that, like, these, these raised, raised crosswalks, the residents I talked to actually want stop signs. Like, there's resident input there where they actually want stop signs in those areas. So I think it's really important, as you have this process takes place, that you get that sort of, you have that, I mean, the reasons, I know we don't talk about it often, but one of the reasons, one main reason why we have commissions is for that level of community engagement in the commission meetings. We don't have that, that opportunity to have, we have study sessions to try to accomplish that sometimes on these projects, but it's so that the level of that community engagement takes place before you get to a preferred alternative design, and then it comes to council and we look at it. We really look for the commissions to get as much community in, input and feedback as possible. So I, that's what, that's where I would be on this subject. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I think we all need to take a step back. First of all, I think there has been some issues with the process. I've been talking to numerous people about this. But right now, if we look at the activities and the timeline, it says, in fact, Complete Streets Commission to evaluate and recommend preferred design alternative on Middle Avenue from San Mateo Drive to Olive Street in anticipation of the tentative 2020 repaving of the straight, same-street segment. In fact, I'm the liaison with the Complete Streets Commission. I've been attending the meetings, and what happened at that meeting was, in fact, engineering came to us. Rich Angelo came to us along with Alta Design, and they presented two proposals to the Complete Streets Commission. Complete Streets Commission did not make this proposal from Olive to San Mateo Drive. It was presented by engineers. Two complete streets, we, Complete Streets did not get a choice other than the proposals. So I think we need to take a step back. This has been an incredibly confusing process and think about what's happening. There was outreach that was done by staff. It was not done by Complete Streets, for number one. Ray, please respond.
No, but that's the point, guys. The point is, so I don't care, like, I'm not attacking Complete Streets Commission, Betsy, I'm not. What I'm saying is, to everyone, I don't, this was, there has not been enough community involvement in this process. And so, and I realize that there might have been, and my understanding, frankly, candidly, is that actually Complete Streets Commission was working with staff behind the scenes on what this would look like. Part, they advance that not the case? Has community, has not worked on this at all? So you just were presented with these two items and then you chose one? Okay, and so in that process, so like I said, not finding fault with Complete Streets Commission. What I'm finding fault with is the fact that we have a POP which has been done, which says it's done, and there's not been any, I mean, the only notice of community was three weeks before, right? Like, that's not, we can't, three weeks before, the mailer went out, and two weeks before, they, you know, were trying, were knocking on doors, asking people to come to a meeting, and now we're, we're behind the eight ball on it. And so granted, I mean, everyone's frustrated by that. And so all I'm saying is, that's fine. And like I said, we're not trying to, like I've said this multiple times, we're not trying to assign blame to anybody. What we're trying to do now is play catch-up on it, all right? And so catch-up on it would be, we move back the date for the preferred alternative. We don't have a preferred alternative right now because, candidly, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to choose a preferred alternative when you've never spoken to, when you've never had this type of outreach to residents.
Can I just chime in here? I mean, I, I think Nikki can, knows better than I do and Kevin, but I think it's helpful to have a preferred alternative for people to either agree or disagree with.
I, candidly, that's not my memory of how we did Santa Cruz. My memory of Santa Cruz is that we went out, we did a bunch of outreach, and then we had a meeting on, and there were multiple different items, and then we chose a preferred alternative with community feedback and engagement taking place the whole time. And then there was a discussion about the preferred alternative we had, and then there was amendment to a preferred alternative. But we didn't, we didn't, I think, this is kind of like a backwards process in terms of outreach where we have a preferred alternative that we're saying, with very little outreach, this is the preferred alternative, and Complete Streets Commission, you pick this one or this one, and then now we're going to go out to the public. We're getting way behind, it's, we've skipped steps, and that's why we are behind right now with the public on this, on this project.
Alternative being the key thing. Alternative means we, there were alternatives that we looked at.
Right.
Otherwise, it's just a solution.
So what I'd like to know is, are you speaking about the Olive to Middle or are you speaking about the entire plan?
Olive to Middle. Olive to San Mateo?
I'm sorry, Olive to San Mateo, thank you. Middle, Olive to San Mateo. Okay. Kids, I would make, I would like to state that we should not be doing outreach to the rest of Middle because I don't think we have an even half-baked plan. We've got a wonderful brainstorming that some of the Complete Street Commissioners did. It's not something, so the rest of it should not be, there should be no outreach at this point to, for the rest of the plan. From Olive to Middle should be in play. And I believe that the reason why this was pushed ahead quickly is because there was, we were trying to make an, we were trying to get some grant money for repaving Olive to Middle and from, anyway, it's part of a grant that has to be put forward by this fall. And so it's being proposed not by Complete Streets but by the Public Works Department.
That's correct. So the, the city had applied for a grant in 2017 for both the Middle sec, excuse me, the Middle corridor between San Mateo and Olive and the Santa Cruz corridor between AV, Orange, and Olive. And so the Santa Cruz item is what's next on your agenda. We've recognized from the Complete Streets Commission hearing in, in April that we needed more time, and quite frankly, we knew we would need more time on the agenda for, for the, the item to come before the council. And so we delayed that until later in the summer. So the, the options that we brought forward to the commission at that point, as Councilmember Nash mentioned, we entered into a contract with Alta Planning and Design. They prepared two alternatives of installations of bike lanes, but we do have the option to reinstall what's, what's there today. So the, the grant deadline is what's driving that process. What we'll need, if you do want us to return to the Complete Streets Commission for additional outreach, we'll have to verify what that does in terms of the, the grant applicability, but we could always repave the street, install temporary striping, or install what's there today and then come back and do something later in the future. So we can follow up with, with the specifics on the, the grant timing after tonight.
All right, I appreciate that. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I'll just add, I can be supportive of, I think, some of the mayor's suggestions as far as pushing back this timeline and making it clear that we, we haven't, are at, are not at a preferred alternative point in, in this process. And I'll only say to this idea of sort of bifurcating whether we're talking about, you know, Olive to San Mateo or the whole thing, and I'll admit some confusion on that, but when you add to the public record, a public document, a design that includes the entire corridor, you can't then go back and say, well, we only really need to reach out to this segment of that because that's the thing that, that's most pressing or that's the thing that's coming up. I mean, we've put in the public record as part of a staff recommendation, a design scheme for the, and only one, right? Only one design scheme for the entirety of, of this corridor. And so that's what people are going to look at, that's what they're going to see, and that's what they're going to react to. And so us going back and sort of then talking about the phasing to, I think the mayor is, we're sort of already behind or in a corner. It's, it's like we've sort of already lost the fight because what people think of is what they see at that moment. And so at this point, I think, again, like, I, I like the idea of the Complete Streets Commission being bold and going out there and, 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 you know, we talk a lot about the fact that, hey, you know, we're, we're in Silicon Valley and we're doing things so slow. And so I, I appreciate, you know, the, the boldness, but the result of boldness sometimes is that you get slapped down and that you get lots of, lots of friction. And I think that that's what, at least, and I don't want to speak too much for my colleagues up here, but I, I think that we are responding to what we've heard from, from, from the public and specifically from residents most, most impacted, that this is, what is, is envisioned here is, is substantive change, right? And, and, and they don't feel that there has been, you know, an appropriate enough process. And I think I would, would have to, have to, have to agree with them or, or agree with their concerns on this. And so, and that's, like I said, I could be supportive of what, of what the mayor is suggesting.
Councilmember Carlton?
So with all that being said, how do we move forward? I, I actually agree with former Mayor Schmidt's suggestion. We don't agree on everything, but I respect him as well. And he rides his bike, he knows what he's talking about. And I would suggest that we, we, the, the concepts here are great. That's spot on. And I look at the summary on the stakeholders and, and that's fine. The key project activities and timeline, that, that's the process. And to Mayor Mueller's point, we have a process. So maybe, I don't know how you feel, I'm, I'm okay approving this, but pulling out the activities and timeline process and, and using the process we have. And that's going to take a step back and have an alternative and conversations, and then let's move forward. So my question is, what is the deadline we have for the, for the grant? Is it like October, November? That'll still give us five or six months to do this.
So the, the grant is that the design needs to be finalized by the fall, and so that's where I think we'll, we'll go back and really look at, at what's the absolute latest that we can get the designs to, the reviewing. So ultimately, it's a federally funded grant that Caltrans has oversight of. So they don't approve the design, but they want to see the, the final plans before we move forward with awarding a construction contract.
I know it's difficult to do things over the summer, but surely we can do this in five months?
Well, so what we're working backwards from is, is having final construction drawings in the fall. And so the, the conceptual design, what we were tracking prior to tonight, was, was trying to have it finalized by the end of July, so coming to the council for, for an action in, in mid-July. So what, what I need to do with our engineering team is, is regroup and see what's our absolute latest for basically finalizing the striping plans for, for Middle Avenue in relationship to the, the grant timeline. But as we mentioned earlier, we do have the ability to look at reinstalling the striping that's out there today and then coming back and replacing it in the future, or seeing if there are opportunities for, for temporary striping that would then go, so nothing permanent would be installed until after there's sufficient time for, for the necessary outreach that, that the council is requesting.
At this point, I think you have direction. Do we need to take a vote on something?
I, I would say for myself, I would prefer that you take a vote tonight.
Well, I think what we, what I would want to do is, I want to go ahead, so, I mean, here's the thing, if it's the, if, I mean, candidly, okay, candidly, guys, I'm confused by a lot. So number one, I want to correct, I think it's important to correct the record for, on, for, for the Complete Streets Commission. There were some statements tonight, like, this is how we did Oak Grove, so we thought we could do it this way, but then that's not really what happened. It was presented to you this way, and then you chose something this way, but you thought you could because of Oak Grove. Like, I, yeah, do you want to clarify? Because I just, I, I don't, I think that...
So the, Mayor Mueller, yes, just to try to clarify, so we're talking about different sections of Middle. So the section from San Mateo out to Olive, those options were brought to us by cit, by the city staff. They were drawn up by consultants, et cetera. That's what we were presented with, and, and that's what we voted on for a preferred alternative. The other more broad, grander project, that was just our, just a conceptual plan that we wanted to throw out there to get the ball rolling, to get debate started, to begin a process. And, and that's, and when I was referring to Oak Grove, that's how we started that process. We did the same thing. That's what I was talking about.
Okay. Now, can I ask you then, because, so that means that the portion that goes by Nelon Park that has the two bike lanes side by side, two lanes of traffic and retains parking is something that the commission came up with?
That's right.
Okay. The subcommittee the commission came up with?
Yes, that's right. And we presented to the committee and got there.
And was that selected as a preferred alternative?
Well, it was, it was the only alternative that we could come up with that we felt would be safe for the community to access Middle Plaza and the undercrossing. So we debated in our subcommittee other approaches, but we settled on this one and presented that to the commission, and we had a lot of debate around it, and then ultimately the commission got on board with it.
Okay.
And asked us just to carry it forward.
I, I will tell you that that is the feedback that I'm hearing from residents on the street is that's the one that they like, but for San Mateo to Middle, is that they're like, if you're willing to do that down by Nelon, but you're not willing to do that near our homes.
The bidirectional, the two-way bike lane, yeah, it's, yeah, understood. Okay.
So, I mean, candidly, if you were, so now let's just get to the meat and bones of it. If you were trying to, like, move this along fast, I would talk to, I would, like, try to have two community meetings and see if residents can get behind that quickly, and maybe you make your grant.
So I just wanted to clarify that the two options that staff brought forward between San Mateo and Olive did include an option that preserved parking on one side of the street. So it doesn't have the two-way facility on one side. It has kind of standard one-direction bike lanes on each side of the street, a painted buffer and parking on one side, and then a second option that eliminated parking on both sides with painted bike lanes with buffers on, on each side. So I think the commission's recommendation was then for parking removal and provision of bike lanes on, on each side of the street. So I think that's where some of the confusion is.
All right, but it didn't have this bidirectional bike lane, which was protected as something for them to choose for that, for the other portion?
Correct. We did look at options for protected bike lanes, but a two-direction facility with protection really starts to eliminate or restrict driveway access, or you really don't have the protection that's needed for a two-way facility on one side of the street.
Okay. And that's something, see, and that's what I mean, guys. So like, so in the discussion with residents, when you talk with them about that, all of a sudden, that option disappears, right? Because if you're saying, it's going to make it really difficult for me to use my driveway, maybe they say, okay, I understand this now, and they start to move toward another one of the options. But that's, I mean, that's just the, that's just, that's the conversation that we have to have. I mean, we just, we really do, and if we, I think if we can dive in, these residents are engaged. And I'll tell you, so I actually, before you guys had this meeting, I was talking with residents on the street, and they really want it to be safer. They really want those speeds to drop. They really want to be able to cross that street. They are, they're engaged for all the right reasons, but they, but they also want to be engaged in choosing this design that, that works and definitely would like to keep... in choosing this design that works and definitely would like to keep parking at least on one side of that street. So if there's a way to do that, you're probably going to get this through much faster with them. It's a much wider street, I mean, at least visually to me than Santa Cruz. And we, on Santa Cruz, when we took away street parking, we ended up doing that to preserve right-of-way. That's why, that's why we did that, was to preserve right-of-way. So I'm going to let Councilmember Taylor speak, because she's been waiting.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for your patience. I'm not going to repeat any other questions. I appreciate my council, co-council, with all the questions that they've had. I just went back to the staff report from February as the informational item, and I just wanted to find out, to help with public outreach and also with information on the staff report, is a lot of what you said isn't here. And I know you're trying to fit something on one page, but it really doesn't. And so, and then also having some links to the staff reports so that we know that this has already been brought before us. So that's the only suggestion I have. And then I also agree with the changes that former Mayor Schmidt made if we are moving forward since our city council, I mean, our city manager said we need to vote on something. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
I was wondering if you could give us an update on number two, what's happening with the Middle Avenue Caltrain crossing?
So we'll bring forward a more detailed update on the June 4th agenda, but essentially, we had a community meeting on May 13th to preview three concepts that were transmitted to the council as well as the rail subcommittee in April, and so got feedback on those options. And then we've also been coordinating with Caltrain around construction options. So we should be ready to do a detailed update at the next council meeting.
Okay. If there's anything we can do to keep the options of having the less deep, the tunnel that's shorter and not as deep on track, please let us know.
Yeah, so we have two options for the shallower tunnels, and that's the general support that we heard at the community meeting was for the shallower options, as I think generally would have expected from a safety, security, and access standpoint.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I just wanted to address one of the other elements of this agenda item was just sort of looking at the commission's work plan and also its organization. And I just want to sort of put out there that I know that the council has voted to make the commission nine members permanently and that we would revisit that issue. And of course, the nine members is a holdover from the combination of the Bike Commission and the Transportation Commission. I have, in no way related to the discussion tonight, I do have concerns about the efficiency of the commission with nine members. I am concerned that it is unwieldy, and so I would like, and I know we have embedded in there this idea that we would revisit this on some basis. I would like to at least throw out there the idea that we revisit this as attrition comes up. You know, we revisit this idea of, should this shrink back down to a seven-member commission? Again, having nothing to do with tonight. But just for the, this idea that, you know, I think that nine members is a bit unruly for a commission. And I think as there are vacancies that come up, we should use that as an opportunity to revisit, revisit this issue, you know, outside of having the somewhat, you know, this, I think, regular check-ins on this that we sort of embedded in the process.
Okay. Who wants to try to clean this up? Count Bill, do you want to, yeah, Councilmember Nash?
One more suggestion, and that's, I would really like to see the title to be Middle Avenue and Olive Street Complete Street Improvements rather than Bicycle Improvements.
That's fine. It's great. Well, looks, everyone has agreement on that?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
All right. So we'll do that.
I'd like to delete the key project activities and timeline just because we have a process to follow. That's way too problematic.
What's, do we have, if we were to delete that, what would be the effect?
So then I think in essence, you'd be approving the summary and then the outreach partners at the bottom. But I think we do want to make sure that it's, the expectations are clear, but we could certainly look at revising the activities and timeline.
Could we tonight approve all of it but the key project activities and timeline and have that be brought back?
Yes.
All right. So there's one other, the last sentence of the opening paragraph above the bullets, you're essentially, you probably want to delete that sentence and change it to the...
The Complete Streets Commission has developed the following concepts.
Yeah, we should delete that. And actually, I think Councilmember Combs talked about pulling the design drawings. I think that probably makes sense for now.
Yeah. I didn't think that was part of this, but I guess...
But we can go ahead and do outreach around that. And I do, I do want to say, I really do appreciate, and you know that, Bill. I really do appreciate the work you do and the work that the commission does.
I appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
I'd actually like to say, as you know, very appreciative of the work that you and the commission do. I think that there was quite a bit of controversy and, or just discussion, and I've since heard it from people in the community about the bidirectional bike lanes. And so I would just like to make sure that we include, that there will actually be an engineering design put forward, perhaps working closely with Bill and Jonathan, but that we actually do not include this and that we don't try and do outreach on this. I'm just not sure if I'm confusing all sorts of different discussions we've had, but I want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, I just, that's fine. I think we, like I said, the feedback I, that I provided was just hearsay from some community members. I mean, what I would expect going forward would be that this would be taken away, that there'd be outreach done to the community to try to problem solve, that the engineers give us, take that, take that information, give us preferred alternative designs, that the commission can go ahead and look at those preferred alternative designs, and that we can have it all framed up. So, and I think, I appreciate, I mean, candidly, I really, I appreciate what's, it's very obvious here, everyone had the best intentions to try to get, to try to get grants, to conserve taxpayer monies for all the very best reasons. I just think, you know, the reason why we have these meetings is to go ahead and to come together and realize sometimes when we have to pull back and do a little bit more work. And so I think we have to pull back here and just do a little bit more work and outreach. So I think it's, then there's no, there's nothing negative at the outset, I just think it's what we have to do. So, so with that, yeah, I agree with that. We pull this, we take out the key project activities and timeline and indicate that that'll come back for us at a later date for us for approval, and everything else is approved. But for the last sentence of the second paragraph, which says, "The Complete Streets Commission has developed a proposal, see attached concepts." Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, you have a second. Council, I'm sorry, Mr. McClure.
And the motion also includes approval of the work plan?
Yes. The motion approves approval of the work, the work plan because it doesn't indicate that it's already been recommended, it just says they're going to work. Well, it says spring 2019. I think that that probably needs to be amended. So where it reads in the first paragraph, sub item three, recommend preferred alternative, design alternative from Middle to San Mateo to Olive in spring 2019. What I would just do is say, recommend preferred design alternative on Middle from San Mateo Ave to Olive Street, and then delete the rest of the sentence, and then, and then, and said and put to include community outreach in the process. And I think that captures it. That gives you guys flexibility to do that.
Mr. Mayor, would it be okay to leave the tentative paving in 2020? It's tentative, but it sets a timeline into the work plan.
It's trying, yeah, it's trying, as long as we get the community outreach done, it's fine to state that goal, right? Everyone, yeah? We'll have to get, they'll take...
No, no, no. I'd just like someone to repeat, I'm confused at this point as to exactly where we are in proposing a motion.
So we've, so on the attachment A, which is the Complete Streets work plan, we've amended one sentence to take out in the spring and everything there follow, and then to indicate to include community outreach. We've deleted the key project and activities timeline in attachment B. That's going to be coming back to us. Staff's going to sit down and figure out what the new timeline will be. We've deleted bicycle improvements and put, and turned that into complete street improvements in the title. We have also then removed the Middle Avenue proposal, design drawings. And then, and then lastly, we've removed the last sentence under the project summary, first paragraph, which says, "The Complete Streets Commission has developed a proposal, see attached concepts," which includes, right? So, great.
For a second?
All right, is there a second? Second? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
I apologize, I couldn't hear the second.
Drew. Councilmember Combs.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We're going to go ahead now, and thank you. Thank you, Bill. We're going to go ahead and move on now to item H3, Adopt Resolution Number 6504, approving the removal of on-street parking on Santa Cruz Avenue between Olive Street and Avian Orange Avenue, and identify a preferred conceptual design to accommodate the installation of bike lanes and sidewalks. Assistant Engineer Richard Angula will introduce the item.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt for a minute, are there going to be questions on the information item on the chronic homelessness tonight? If not, we'd release our staff who's here to address any questions.
Is there any community?
They're glad to say if you have questions, but...
Are there any public comment cards?
Public comment on item I2.
There is public comment on item I2 this evening? Okay. Sorry. Okay.
Great. So we'll give a very brief summary overview of the Santa Cruz Avenue repaving project. So I think we've already talked about the timeline and the grant as part of the last agenda item, but we'll just walk through a little bit more specifics on what the process and proposal has been for Santa Cruz. So in, just in terms of the overall project area, likely remember in 2016, excuse me, summer of 2017, the city had undertaken a repaving and sidewalk construction project on Santa Cruz from Olive Street to University Drive. And so the proposed project before you tonight would be extending essentially the scope of that work towards Avian Orange, as shown on the map on the screen. So this is an image near Hillview School at Olive Street of the existing roadway configuration in the area that was reconstructed in the summer of 2017, the new sidewalks added, buffered bike lanes, and then the maintenance of a travel lane in each direction and a center turn lane. So as we move into the section that's proposed for this next phase of the project, the center turn lane drops, and so some of the configurations look a little bit different, but the general scope of the approach and what's proposed is consistent with the prior section of Santa Cruz, with looking to eliminate approximately 17 on-street parking spaces on Santa Cruz Avenue on the south side of the street near Hillview School, the area that's shown in this image, and then provision of sidewalks on either side of the street, and providing buffered bike lanes where the space exists in general. Those are areas where there's no turn pocket. So this image is at Lemon and North Lemon Avenues where there's an existing turn pocket to access the side streets. And so in those areas, there's not enough space to preserve sidewalks, bike lanes, the turn lanes, travel lanes, as well as buffers for the bike lanes. So in those places, we're proposing to drop the bike, to drop the buffers, excuse me. So we looked at a number of different alternatives, and what we summarized for you in the staff report were the two that provided most feasible from a construction standpoint. Both of those include a 40-foot curb-to-curb width, but have some adjustments to either the southern or northern curb, as summarized on the screen as well as in the staff report that was attached to the agenda item. So moving the southern curb was found to have significantly more impacts to utility poles, which would not be likely to be completed during the timeline of the project that we're working towards with the grant funds, as we mentioned in the prior agenda item, as well as having some impacts on potential heritage, having impacts on heritage tree removals, up to five trees with moving that southern curb. And the other option, moving the northern curb line, has much less impact on utility poles, easier to construct, as well as not having impacts on trees. There are a number of driveways that would need to be reconstructed, regraded with the moving of the northern curb, but we'd be working with property owners closely as we go through the design process to make that as painless as possible. So staff's recommended options, whether you move the northern or southern curb line, have the same overall configuration for alternative one A and one B. So the graphics on the screen, we worked with Alta Planning and Design for these graphics as well, shows the configuration of what's proposed, where you have a curb, a turn lane in the top image, and then the bottom image where there's no turn lane, and you can repurpose that additional roadway space for a buffer and a wider bike lane. Both of the options would ideally construct five-foot sidewalks. There are a few locations where in order to preserve trees, we may need to narrow the sidewalks further to four, four and a half feet, and we'll be working through those issues as we go through the more detailed design phase as we move forward. So we also have prepared example striping plans. Alta Planning and Design assisted us with these as well. I'm happy to bring these up and answer specific questions, but given the time, we won't go through the details of the striping plan tonight. And this continues to head east towards Olive Street as we move through the corridor. So with that, we're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. The mayor has a conflict. Are there any questions on the dials? Judy, do we have public comment? That's great. Well, I have a, I have a question because it's not in the actual resolution. How many parking spaces are being removed?
So I introduce Rich Angelo, Assistant Engineer with the city's Transportation Division.
So it's approximately 17 spaces. What we do is take the length and then separate and subtract the driveways and then calculate how many spaces it would be. It's approximately 17. I did do some look, you know, outreach out to those residents as well, and I spoke with five of the residents, and three of them were completely in favor of the project, and the other two understood, but want to keep their parking, but understood.
And then what about the rest? You said 17 parking spaces, so how many homes? Did you do outreach to all of the homes there?
I tried to, but I only got ahold of five of them. There's not that many houses there. I think there's nine or something.
I'm going to wait and see if Councilmember Carlton has a question.
No, I do.
Excuse me, Councilmember Nash has a question.
So on the proposed Santa Cruz resurfacing, it said, "Narrow the roadway width, limit sidewalk width between four to five feet." Having, if we can go up to six feet anywhere, I know that there's quite a bit of ivy there, that would be beneficial. Six feet, six-foot sidewalks are wonderful on Santa Cruz Avenue. So just as, whenever possible.
We can definitely factor that in. I think... I think there are a number of sections that already have existing sidewalk, so we would not be looking to rebuild those as part of this project. But the sections where we're reconstructing, we would look for opportunities to maximize width. From the preliminary review we've done, we think they're pretty limited, but we can certainly look for those opportunities as we go forward.
Will you be, my understanding is that you will be changing the asphalt sidewalks to concrete?
Correct. There's one particular section in front of 1095 Lemon that we don't believe at this point, in order to preserve the trees there, that would remain, what would be constructed as an asphalt pathway as opposed to concrete sidewalk, but the majority of the rest of sections would be upgrading the existing asphalt to concrete.
Next question is, or comment is, on the vehicle travel lanes. Is there a reason not to do ten feet and then use any extra width in the bike lanes?
So, what's proposed is for ten-foot travel lanes in this section.
Okay, very good. And then, final comment is on the Table 3 project schedule. If, I would suggest, rather than no parking signs, have no stopping signs.
Thank you for the clarification. As we ran through the presentation, the resolution today does mention parking removal, but isn't explicit in no parking versus no stopping. So, we could, as you think about a motion or an action on the item tonight, I think providing that clarification is something we could then incorporate into the resolution and then make sure it's signed appropriately.
Just generally, to the extent that we can across the city, whenever it makes sense to use no stopping rather than no parking, because people, even though I think the intent is no stopping, people pull over and look at their phones or whatever, and then stay in the car and therefore consider that they're not parked, but they have the same intent or the same outcome of blocking the bike lanes.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
Apologize, I just saw my notes. I did have one comment. Some time ago, I remember Anna Eschew had a big thing she was pushing forward, which was the Dig Once program, and I believe there was some funding connected to that, too. The idea is that it wastes taxpayer dollars when we dig things up and we put something in, and then we come along behind it and we dig it up again and put it back, which drives me crazy because we do it. But that's mostly because we've got so many different jurisdictions dealing with the same stuff under the road. Is it possible at all to deal with undergrounding some of these things? And maybe if we're not going to get any money out of PG&E because they're busy going, refiling, as they say, are there any federal funds or anything like that we can get to try and deal with the poles in a more cost-effective way than building beautiful sidewalks and then tearing them up a few years later?
Yes, so, we did look at the utility pole impacts. It's definitely a driver of the project alternatives because they do constrain what's possible to be built on the schedule that we're looking at. Ultimately, it's not feasible to work with PG&E in order to underground as part of the schedule that we're on right now.
Well, it's something I give up on that. I was just wondering if, I heard that there was some Dig Once federal funding we might be able to get, or is that gone?
So, I don't know. We can definitely look into that specific funding source, but the biggest constraint is the timing. And so, PG&E still needs to review plans, so even if we were to secure funding to do the work, I don't know that they'd be able to respond and review plans on the timeline that we're on.
Okay, thank you.
As a schedule driver as well.
All right, so, it looks like from what you're saying with this, Alternative 1A is going to have five heritage trees and PG&E issues. So, Alternative 1B is what you're recommending because of these issues?
Correct.
Just to clarify. Thank you.
So, what's next is that we vote? Can I get a motion?
Do I make the motion? Can you make a motion? I'd like to move that we adopt this plan with increasing the sidewalk, sidewalks wherever possible, without hurting heritage trees, and that we change the no parking signs to no stopping signs. Was that okay?
So, including adoption of the resolution, and did you say Alternative 1B?
Yes. No, Alternative 1B.
Is that good? And does she need to say the resolution number? Or is that...
No, it's the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Exactly.
I have a follow-up question on that. The widening of the sidewalk will not impede the ability for us to have a three-foot buffer, will it? Because the buffer is super important. As kids, this is, no, these are separated by ivy. These are actually separated sidewalks. It's wonderful.
Good.
I just, I know, but I just want to make absolutely sure that it's not, because I've seen kids drive a bike on the phone, you know.
I see them every day.
The buffers, yeah, as you know, the buffers...
Great, we can take that guidance as part of the design-specific feedback that is packaged into what we're hearing from you tonight.
Okay, then I'll second that.
Just to clarify, are you talking about a buffer between the bike lane and the travel lane, or between the sidewalk and the bike lane?
I'm talking about the bike lane and the cars.
Yeah, there is no buffer between the bike lane and the travel lane, is there?
So, there is, except at the intersections where there's a turn pocket today. So, there are two cross-sections under Alternative 1B that are shown on the screen.
But that's not going to be impacted by the width of the sidewalk?
Correct. I think based on the feedback that we got from the council, we'll prioritize the buffer first, then sidewalk width as a second priority, and under the general circumstance that no trees are to be removed as part of the project, which is very consistent with the guidance on the last phase of the Santa Cruz sidewalk project as well.
Okay, we are ready to vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
With the mayor recused.
Yes, with Mayor Mueller recused.
On Item H4, actually, can we go ahead and just take a quick five-minute break? Okay. Update on best practices for addressing chronic homelessness. And it's an information item. Does anyone need staff to present on the information item? No, we have a public comment card. Excuse me, Mr. Conroy? Kirk Conroy?
Kirk Conroy, thirty-year Menlo Park resident, member of the Housing Commission. However, I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight. Mayor Mueller, city council members, thank you for your service to the community and the opportunity to address it tonight. Last night, the city's Planning Commission held a study session for a proposed development of a sixteen-room boarding house to be located on Willow near Coleman. I spoke against this use for that highly visible location because I believe it's inconsistent with the neighborhood of high-end townhomes and the medical office building across the street, but this is not my point. I'm here tonight to recommend a different location for such a development or one like it, which at a September 2014 Planning Commission study session for that project, one commissioner described it as having a SRO feel about it. Adjacent to Life Move's Haven House Family Shelter located at the end of Van Buren in the Flood Triangle, the district in which I live, is the two-and-a-half-acre demolished Flood School site. I understand that the city has been in discussions with the Ravenswood School District for the development of the site and to teacher and perhaps other city employee housing. If the school district cannot be convinced to additionally put some housing for the homeless on their two-and-a-half acres, I recommend that the city encourage the county to swap a tiny fraction of its approximately twenty-four acres of Flood Park that is currently scheduled for a major renovation for some of the school district's land, such that Haven House can be expanded to provide such, perhaps in the form of the proposed development on Willow, housing for the homeless. Such a swap would be easily accomplished as the land is effectively identical. The site is perfectly suited for this purpose with access through the existing Haven House facility. The acreage of the proposed Willow Road development is less than a quarter of an acre. Certainly, the people of San Mateo County would be willing to sacrifice such a small amount of parkland to provide this much-needed safety net for our communities most disadvantaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on this item? Nope? All right, we've heard the item. Thank you very much. And while we're here, is there any other questions on Item I1? Just want to cross off the informational items. City Council Agenda Topics, June to August 2019.
I have a question about the PACE thing, PACE program. I feel like PACE is actually a form of, like, payday lending, and evil in all forms and fashion has informed their representative of the same, until they drop their rate that they lend people, which they have said they won't do. So, I don't know how other people feel, but I will forever vote against them until they change the amount of interest that they charge people.
All right, well, if the item isn't agendized tonight...
No, but whether or not this is coming up, I thought was, I guess it's information.
It's just information that's coming.
It's just information, all right, never mind. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Nope? All right, then we will go ahead and, so, that item, we're done with information items for the evening. Let's go ahead and hear Item H4. Assistant City Manager Nick Pegaros will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller and members of the city council. I'm Nick Pegaros, Assistant City Manager. And this evening, I am presenting the recommendation for that the city council consider a pilot public engagement program. The genesis of this particular item came up in conversations with the city manager and the assistant to the city manager, Clay Curtin, about opportunities and resources that may be available to help us address some of the challenges that we're experiencing by way of some of the items that we experienced earlier this evening on the agenda. And it turns out that there are some great resources available to us, and it's actually quite exciting opportunity for the city. So, the direction we're requesting from council this evening is to adopt the Institute for Local Government's public engagement framework called TIERs. The recommendation would be that we apply on a pilot basis, or on an immediate basis, excuse me, the TIERs framework to the local minimum wage ordinance, the branch library feasibility study, and the commission committee handbook overhaul, as discussed in the staff report. This program would require no additional FTEs. However, as I'll go into in later detail, we do want to make sure the council is aware of this sort of repurposing of a previously approved position. And again, Institute for Local Government is a nonprofit organization that serves local government with the intent of promoting good government at the local level. So, contained in the council packet, there are several handouts or flyers, pamphlets from the Institute for Local Government. The report starts by outlining sort of the different types of engagement that the ILG or Institute for Local Government has identified. Civic engagement, which as you can see, is perhaps more at the grassroots level, political level, going all the way up to public engagement. Reasons to engage the public, there are several reasons here. I think that a couple of these points perhaps may speak to some of the comments that we received this evening on other agenda items. But ultimately, the ILG is here with this framework to help us do sort of a very scalable program and system to provide public engagement opportunities. So, as part of the ILG service, they offer what's called the Learning Lab, and this is a two-day course that several staff members, including me, I bet you never see, thought you'd see a smile on my face in a Hawaiian shirt. But it was a course, it was a two-day course that we attended, and we walked through the framework and received input from other agencies in California that are exploring the possibility of using TIERs. And so, we received the staff here. We have Adrian Lee Bird, who's our Assistant Community Services Director. We have Ronnie Singh in our library, Thomas Rogers in our planning, our principal planner, and then Sean Reinhardt, Library Services Director. So, the objective of the Learning Lab, you'll see there, was really to introduce the participants to the various aspects of the TIERs framework, how we can identify and overcome a variety of barriers and challenges. And then, subsequent to the training, we have access to ILG staff to assist us on a technical basis in applying the framework as we adapt it to our organization. So, at a high level, this is the TIERs framework, Think, Initiate, Engage, Review, and Shift. Each of these pillars, as they're referred to, has a detailed sort of flow chart with thought starters to help staff or help those who are responsible for public engagement to ensure that we're doing a comprehensive approach to the process. And I think one of the key elements that the ILG really sort of emphasizes in the TIERs framework is the emphasis on reality checks, and that's really just taking a moment when you reach key points, key decision, key forks in the road, and say, are we on path? Is this where we thought we'd be? If not, how do we course correct? One of the elements that the Learning Lab impressed upon its participants is really clarity in sort of the purpose of the public engagement. And here is a matrix that I believe is readable, that really talks about the different types of outcomes that the council or that the organization is seeking in its public engagement with the community, ranging from everything from informed, where we just promise that we will keep folks informed, to empower, which is the city council will, or the city will implement what is decided. Just to give a quick insight, this is in the staff report, but for the members of the public, this is an example of the framework, as I mentioned earlier, sort of thought starters. This is the pillar, the Think pillar, and the Initiate pillar. You'll see that there are questions like, what might go wrong? How might your approach mitigate for challenges, et cetera? And then, further, ILG gives some recommendations... And then further, ILG gives some recommendations on various types of engagement approaches, low, low to medium, medium to high. And again, these are, this is not a prescriptive program, however, this is just asking the questions of how we might engage with our, with our residents. Key takeaways from the TIERs program, the clearest, clear as can be, is goals for public engagement should be clear. I think that one of the things that we've attempted to do over this last year is to provide greater clarity of what it is that we are attempting to do, whether it be in the goal-setting session, or even in the budget process with the project on a page. There are any number of opportunities for us to be clearer in that process, to, to develop project timelines and budgets and staff time, and for all of that to be sort of documented at the early stages, so there's, so we minimize opportunities for, for miscommunication and frustration in the future. So, the city council's role in this, the pilot program, we are looking at adopting, we're asking the council to adopt the TIERs framework and dedicate staff to fully roll out the program to the organization. We are asking that the, as part of the pilot program, we will return to council on specific projects with, to establish the spectrum of public participation. What is the expectation of the particular engagement that we're looking at in those three projects or others? What budget do we need for scarce resources? And then really just clearly set expectations. And then secondarily, we will be looking to the council to authorize budget for technology investments that will allow us to really optimize resources that are available for public engagement. The recommendation in the staff report would be that the city council provide, authorize us to create a public engagement manager. This position would be one FTE-approved, and we would use a vacant position that's budgeted for the Library System Improvement Project, for those who were on the council at the time, when we were looking at building, rebuilding the main library. Proposal was included in that particular package of recommendations that requested the provision of a staff member in the city manager's office to manage the construction progress, given the type of engagement and our experience with the donor who stepped forward for that particular project. That position has been held vacant. We have never filled it because the council has not given us direction to move forward with the main project. That said, the resource, the recent hiring of Sean Reinhardt as our Library Services Director brings a tremendous wealth of experience and expertise in building libraries, and we feel, we're very confident that the, that we have the staff resources necessary to successfully execute the Branch Library Project. You'll see example of duties. One of the key elements here is that this position is external-focused, is building database, centralized database of potential stakeholders, building relationships with those stakeholders, et cetera. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, conducting the reality checks. So, the next steps here, we would apply the TIERs Public Engagement Framework immediately on those three projects. We would work to recruit, or recruit the dedicated staff, and then we would come back with a best-of-breed financial technology assessment to move forward with the budget and financial transparency technologies. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. We have a couple of public comment cards, and just to give council members a heads-up, I do have a request from a council member to just go ahead and do some preliminary questions, but continue this item for a decision to another meeting. But we can go ahead and do some, do some discussion this, tonight, on that topic beforehand, so we can flush, sort of flush out some questions. I'm sorry, Ms. Bramlett.
Well, we, this is certainly timely to be focused on this, as to the point made about the discussion earlier. I do want to make a few comments related to the staff report, and then what occurred today that's connected. First, public engagement, I think, they're different roads to roam. I mean, what we talked here, we heard about a model. I've seen other models, they have kind of the same goal. I think we can learn, you know, there are other things we can learn from, too. One thing I do want to stress right now, as I understand the goal of empower, that's more where, for example, a community-led area plan in Bell Haven, that would be an example of empower, you know, under guidelines, where, you know, the people you're trying to communicate with, you know, it's a higher level. So, you know, I'm sure as we go along, we'll fine-tune that. And then our written documents are important, too, like this project in the page that's been talked about. This is a variation, a very weak variation in my mind, of something the Finance and Audit Committee wanted done, kind of like at a glance information, over two pages, that had financial details, timelines, links to broader plans, kind of a level of information, so people really could review, for example, the capital improvement projects and really understand what was going on. So, our engagement, you know, it doesn't have to be boil the ocean, or kind of, you know, can't even start with documents that are easy to understand and read. Okay. Regarding the staff report, I have a question about the claim that we're not, we don't need the Library Systems Improvement Project position, because the library requests for new staff did include the notation that one, at least one part of the job would be working on the Bell Haven Library. So, there's a little mixed message there. Public engagement can be measured. I mean, there are from the same outfit articles how to measure it, and I think this would be a good thing, not just reality checks, but some of this actually systematically measure it, because I've seen staff reports that said, oh, we had wonderful outreach, but, you know, then the residents learn about it and come forward. Our concern over Brown Act violations, I think, has led to stifling a public engagement. I've read articles on that, where, you know, other jurisdictions are broadening how they go about getting the public's feedback and beyond just the three minutes at the microphone. And finally, some towns have advisory committees for public engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Good evening, council members. And the reason why I'm here commenting on this item is, was sparked by, I wasn't able to attend in person the council meeting that was held in Bell Haven, but I did listen to it live that evening, and that was the one where it came out in the meeting in Bell Haven, that the parks survey had not yet been translated into Spanish, and there were, you know, there's like a week or two left to go in the survey period that had been going on for quite a while. And so, the thing that I would like, love to encourage city council and staff to consider is the topic of outreach for whom. There is a line in the staff report that talks about considering who to outreach to, and I think that's, it's an important topic to consider. Who might be more difficult to reach? Who because they, like, English may not be their first language, and we need to think about the languages of the people who would participate in a particular topic. Who might not be able to come out to a meeting because they have small children, and maybe it's a parent with, you know, small children to, that might want to come to Nealon Park and would be interested in the safety improvements on Willow. When we're talking about housing and housing downtown, who in terms of maybe someone who's a low-income worker who can't afford to live anywhere near work and is housing insecure? So, to have a component here where we think about not only who can easily make it to meetings and has disposable time, but who might be relevant and harder to reach and make particular efforts to reach the people that are important parts of our community, and making sure that they are being reached out to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Pamela Jones.
Good evening, Pamela Jones, and, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I would really like to see this a part of the city council procedure manual update. I think this is a top-down and not an inside-out job. So, I was, I had missed the part where staff has already attended the workshops, and they've already have a plan on how they're going to implement it, which I think is really creative of the staff, and I appreciate them, you know, moving forward on that. But I have concern that it will continue the type of problems that we have seen with public outreach, which you have heard over the last number of years from the Bell Haven neighborhood. It's now that we're getting more play, because a whole nother community is saying the same thing we've been saying for quite some time. I think it's important that the person hired for this position comes from outside the community, or outside of the, the current working staff. I think we need to have a new, bright, forward-thinking mind that has experience in this area of community engagement. I've seen twice where we do have a staff person that was able to reach out to community. We saw that, the, the community engagement with the housing, the outreach that was done for the Housing Commission when they were doing the tenant relocation. So, it can be done, but I think in general, we see that it, that it has been a problem. So, I look forward to you bringing this at another meeting, having more discussion, and having other resources, because there's a lot of other resources, and I'm not saying there's something wrong with this one. It's just, it's always kind of nice to look at it more than one resource that we know is available. So, again, thank you for having this as a part of the agenda and talking about this, because the only way we're going to get people involved is to get people involved, and, and that comes from you, you know, the community knowing that our council really wants us here helping out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone have any, have any questions tonight before we move on, move the item? All right. So, we're going to go ahead and continue this item, and the reason, council members want to work through some, through some things before we can talk about it collectively, so they're going to seek you out, Mr. Pegueros, to do that. I'm going to go ahead then, and so that was the last item on the agenda. Moving on now to city managers' report. Any items to report this evening?
No report.
Any council members have anything to report? Councilmember Nash?
So, there's a Stanford GUP meeting on May 30th at 6:00 PM, and we're looking for as many people to come to it as possible. The Santa Clara County Planning Commission will be in Palo Alto, at the Palo Alto City Chambers, and this will be the one chance when the community can reach out to the Planning Commission, show how much we care about the Stanford GUP and what's happening in the process, and where it'll actually be in Palo Alto as opposed to down in San Jose. So, Supervisor Joe Semidion has strongly urged all of us to come to the meeting, which is at six o'clock. There will be food there, and we need as many people to show up and show their support for the process as possible. Thank you.
Okay. So, I just have two things real quick with, one, two things. One, with respect to the agenda, with respect to the last item, H4, and with respect to the item related to the vehicles, just want to encourage everyone to reach out to staff independently, because when those come back, I want to, like, just have, go through them quick. Item, that would be item F2, and I mean, and when I say go through them quick, I mean, just like have our, have us to our topics of discussion quick with staff on them. Doesn't mean the item will be short, but just because, I don't want the agenda to get backed up. Then the, the thing, the, I have two things to report. So, yesterday, I met with a group of stakeholders in the city that I convened who were interested in public art. The idea was to create a public art nonprofit, similar to Menlo Spark. They are going to do so. They're working right now on a charter and a 501(c)(3), and they'll be bringing, so we will be bringing that back to council for you guys to look at, at that time, that they're done with that. The second is a student, a student, a Menlo Park Student Commission. So, I met with a number of students in the city who are interested in doing that. I met with faculty at Menlo Atherton High School who have agreed, so we don't have a staff member here at the city, because that's sort of outside of our expertise, but there's a staff member at Menlo Atherton High School who has agreed to take that on and liaise with the city commissions on that. And so, we're trying to put some framework around that to bring back to you guys to look at. But it wouldn't just be a commission from Menlo Atherton, it would be for all the local high schools, and it would be in conjunction with the faculty there who are running their service learning program. So, that looks like that's showing merit. So, those are my two council member reports tonight. Yes, councilmember Nash?
So, two things. One is, I believe that Sean Reinhardt has experience with student commission from his time in Hayward, which we've talked about, and it was very beneficial, so that might be a place to, a resource.
Great.
And then the other question I have is, do we have any information about when Willow Village may come back?
I think it's possible they'll be back on June 4th.
All right. And so, with that, if there's nothing else, I think we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.